Meeting to order of the Sutter County Board of Supervisors. And let's see, first of all, we have procedure for public comment. Members of the public will be allowed to address the board during the board consideration of each agenda item. If you wish to speak about any item appearing on the agenda, please fill out a speaker card noting the number of the agenda item about which you wish to speak. If you wish to speak and present it to the board clerk. If you wish to speak about more than one agenda item, please fill out a separate speaker card for each agenda item you wish to speak. And if you wish to speak under public comment, please note that on the speaker card when the matter is presented, pre- process of lecturers lectern and being noted noted by the chairman. Okay, let's do the roll call, please.
Supervisor McKelley?
Here.
Supervisor Flores?
Present.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Here.
Supervisor Baines?
Present.
Supervisor Conant?
Present.
Okay, we'll do the invocation by Richard Loughlin and a pledge of allegiance by Chuck Smith. Please stand.
Good and gracious God, we thank you for the freedom to meet in the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice. You have provided us a vision of your kingdom to which we strive to achieve. Visit this meeting, we pray, guiding the discussions to increase our safety as we travel our roads and streets and provide for the health, mental health of the young people struggling to discover the gifts that you have provided them. Open the ears of our hearts to listen to each other from each other's perspectives, allowing us to have a bit more humility around the decisive decisiveness of where we can and cannot compromise, where we are alike, and where we are dissimilar. Renew the ties of mutual regard which form our civic life. Enable us, and especially our commissioners, to work to eliminate poverty, justice, prejudice, and oppression so that peace may prevail with righteousness and justice with order and that men and women from different cultures with differing talents may find with one another the fulfillment of their humanity through your holy grace. Amen.
Yeah, I guess we're good. Okay, we now have some presentations.
Jennifer Hillary and Robin Oliver, please join the board to receive a proclamation recognizing October 2024 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
This is Jennifer Hillary, RN, a nurse specializing in cancer care. A highly qualified professional with knowledge, skills, and experience. She has worked at Right Out Cancer Center since 2005, and Jennifer wants you to know that she will continue to be here, fighting cancer daily at rightoutcancercenter.org.
Okay, that surprised me. I didn't know we were having a video part first. Okay, October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month and the annual campaign to raise awareness of the disease that affects both women and men and support the research for the cure. According to the National Cancer Society, when breast cancer is detected early and is in the isolated stage, the five-year related survival rate is 99%. And a key message for the detection includes performing monthly breast self-exams and scheduling regular clinical breast exams and mammograms, with the American Cancer Society recommending the annual mammogram for women once they reach age 40. And it is vital for the effects of breast cancer have access to quality, affordable care, and the research of all forms of breast cancer continues to be vigorously supported. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim October 2024 as Breast Cancer
October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Sutter County?
Okay. Awareness Month in the county of Sutter and recognize the illness, its effects, and encourages Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2024. women especially to be conscious of local benefits of early detection, diagnosis, and treatment of breast cancer. Thank you. Domestic violence is an individual private dignity, security, and humanity due to the
Thank you. I am Jennifer Hillary, the Director of the Cancer Center.
systemic use of physical, emotional, sexual, physical, and economic control and/or abuse.
I did not bring Robin with me, but I did bring some nurses and one of our medical oncologists because they do the work day in and day out for our community. So we are very privileged that we have this cancer center within our community, and we
Domestic violence is not confirmed by any group or groups of people, but crosses all
are honored that we are able to do that work every day.
economic, racial, affected affectional preferences and social barriers, therefore affecting
So thank you for the recognition. We appreciate it.
Thank you. society as a whole. Research shows that by creating communities where people are can created support and care for one another can reduce the incidence of domestic violence. Sutter County is committed to restoring the right to freedom, to fear for our own homes and communities. In recognition of the importance of work done by CASA, Desperado, and cooperating agencies in the county of Sutter, on behalf of the entire Sutter County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Sutter County. We urge all citizens, agencies, and businesses to work together as a team in our community throughout prevention, intervention, and education programs to take a stand until the society has zero tongs for domestic violence.
honor of your retirement from Sutter County?
Okay, Charles. Chuck Smith, a lifetime resident of UBS Sutter area, has throughout his entire career contributed substantially to enhance the community. And Chuck started his career in Sutter County First Public Information Officer in February 2008. And over the past 16-plus years with the county, Chuck has tirelessly promoted excellence communication between Sutter County and local communities, including leading communications during several significant emergencies and local disasters, and keeping the community informed on the county programs, events, and issues. To be further enhance the county's image and promote community awareness, Chuck has encouraged the use of social media, including providing information and entertaining documentaries and videos on topics such as flood awareness, employee recruitment, and sheriff's offices give up video with more than 18 million views. Oh, get up, get up, yeah, get up.
Not give up.
Get up, get up. YouTube video. Sutter County Board of Supervisors caused the names of each member to be affixed to the gold resolution in congratulating Chuck Smith on a well-deserved retirement and expressed its thanks for the tremendous contributions that he has made to Sutter County and our local community.
This may take a while. Are we going to roast Chuck tonight? You know, I don't, I don't even know where to begin. Well, let me start with this because I've served for 10 years as a county supervisor, and the day I walked in the door, Chuck was there. And Chuck, I would just want to tell you, it's been a wonderful serving with you. It's been an honor actually serving with you. You've helped me a lot from day one, helped me create, you know, lots and lots of ways of presenting the topics that we had to present from the county. You helped educate me a lot on the history of the whole area, you know, from Marysville to Sutter County all the way around. You helped me, show me the ropes a lot of ways here, and I really appreciate that from the beginning because you were really there every time I needed, day and night, you know, weekends sometimes, whenever you were there, whenever I needed you, you were there to help me out to do that. And I just wish you the best in whatever you're planning in the future. I know, you know, got to know your lovely wife as well, which we already, we already knew her before, but just, you know, now you can spend some quality time with her and you guys can be together, or maybe you have other endeavors planned, who knows? And then best of all, I get to be your Facebook friend now, so this is really cool. So, but just congratulations, Chuck, and thank you for all you've done for Sutter County.
Ditto to what Dan had to say. Chuck, Chuck puts up a lot with five supervisors. I don't know about the other four, but he answers his phone when he's on vacation. He answers his phone after hours, said Chuck, can you help me with this? I really need the history lesson on this. I gotta know. Hey, we don't always know what we're talking about. Chuck, just along with everything else, helps connect the dots and helps us put it together. I really appreciate your friendship, your mentorship, everything over the last six years. You mean a lot to me. You've helped me out with a lot of stuff, and I really appreciate it, and I'm really excited for you guys. You got a lot of talent, I see, where your daughter gets her talent. I mean, incredible. So, but thank you for everything, and I hope you really enjoy you guys' retirement.
Yeah, Chuck, I've only had the opportunity to be here just over three and a half years, but I just want to say that, um, thank you. There's not a town hall that's taken place in our community without having Chuck all over it. The information that that he's brought out to the community and in good times and in bad, you've been, you know, wealth of knowledge, and I appreciate you giving us the opportunity or allowing us to lean on you in those times of of need, but, um, but really making us all look good up here. And so, um, so thank you, and congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you. So Chuck, you know, you're going to be greatly missed and and by me, especially in helping guide us through getting information out, especially in all of these emergency situations that have happened over the years. But Chuck and I have an office right next to each other, and he's such a great wealth of knowledge, especially when it comes to local history. And if we didn't have work to do, you and I might sit there all day just talking about history. And so anyways, it's been really great to get to know you, and just because you're leaving, don't think I'm not going to lean on you a little bit once in a while when I have a question or two, okay? All right, thank you. Congratulations to both of you.
So I've been with the county for 15 years now, started in 2009. So I know what it's like to work here, but I don't know what it's like to work here without Chuck Smith, who's been the entire time. And he was the first friend I made moving to the area. And just a great coworker and really smart and dedicated and does good things for the community that a lot of you might not realize, like donating money consistently to local charities. He did Dancing With Our Stars. He, um, he donates to the local radio station all the time that people don't realize. Just a very thoughtful person, hardworking, and you wouldn't be surprised to see him at the office at 10:00 PM or 5:00 AM. Allegedly, I've never been there at those times, but he, he is there sometimes. So I just wanted to thank Chuck for the great work he's done, and, you know, he's a champion of government transparency and a great advisor, and he's going to be sorely missed.
I'd just like to say that, you know, Chuck's been in on every disaster it seems like the county's had from when I took office, I think it was in office a whole month, and so seven years ago, eight years ago, went pretty quick. We had the floods and the Orville Spillway failure almost, and on and on and on, and then it was the fires. And but Chuck through all those disasters has been there, communicating with the citizenry, helping with people in need, and just doing a great job. And, you know, in the last three years, he's had his own little problems. A tree fell on his house, and he just finally moved back in his house, what, after three years? Yeah, and, and then he no sooner gets moved in, and we had a little storm a while back, and his basement floods. So anyway, so he's getting a little training on his own disaster. Oh, yeah. Yeah. So I'll give it to you, Chuck, take over.
So first, thank you so much for the opportunity that I was given to work here, and I really appreciate every elected official that's come to the county has come with the county in mind. I want to say that out front because there's people out there that don't understand. So I want to say that public employees are the least appreciated in this community, and they do tremendous work. And I've known this when I was a reporter, I covered city council meetings, supervisors' meetings. I know how hard everybody in local government works, and it's an easy dog to kick. So my advice to is to ignore people on social media. Ignore people on social media and understand that you're doing good work, especially in public health. During COVID, your messaging saved lives. I don't care what those people out there were saying about other things. So, and it's always the people. People ask me if I like my job, and I say, yeah, because I get to work with smart people doing good things in this community. And so keep it up. You guys do great work.
We'll now move on to public comment. Member of the public will be allowed to address the board of items of interest to the public that are within a subject matter jurisdiction of the board of supervisors. State law provides that no discussion or action may be taken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Speaker for that.
Yes, Chair, we have five speaker cards. The first speaker is Tina Hessong.
Gentlemen, it is my constitutional right and my duty to hold my government accountable. I come before you each meeting presenting to you information that you may not like or believe, but it is your job to listen. I am respectful to you, and I expect the same in return. Reactionary measures against people in this country who dare to have legitimate questions about our election system are at an all-time high. The Constitution tells us it's our right and our duty to question. Every time the governing bodies in this country move against election deniers, you are aggregating our constitutional rights. It speaks huge volumes and is a signal of guilt. Honestly, it just strengthens my resolve. AB 969 is making it illegal to provide the constituents with election records. Hello, are the words Hava funds transparency and the Hatch Act flashing before your eyes? How dare we, the people, demand transparency? Because we know that the election system is rigged, and it uses algorithms to weight the votes to achieve a desired outcome. I want to thank the members of the New California State Numbers Team who worked tirelessly to unweave the tangled web of election rigging, and their favorite quote is, "The numbers don't lie." Supervisor Michelli, your 2020 election was not affected by the algorithms. However, your March 2024 primary was. Your votes were weighted on the negative side of the algorithm, and Boone was weighted on the positive, meaning that someone subverted the will of the people in Sutter County. Your certified count total was 1,568, and your true vote count was 1,960. You won your seat, but yet you're being removed from it. You should be infuriated, not for yourself, but for the people of District 1. You were voted into office in 2020 at 69.95% and lost your seat in 2024 at 45.89%. Your district dropped you like a hot potato by 23 percentage points. What in the world could you have done to lose 23% of your base? Your supporters were up against organized suppression and disenfranchisement produced by algorithms. Gentlemen, you are supposed to serve at the will and the consent of the people. We know that our elections in this country are being subverted, and it's obvious that the powers that be are afraid and making desperate moves to stay in power. Newsflash, we, the people, no longer consent. People of Sutter County in November only vote on Election Day and only vote in person. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Tony Farley.
Tony Farley, from South UC South, Waltz Hall Park. Here, thank everyone for your service. Thank you for your service, Sarah Rios, Smith House Lady. Thank you for your service, Jennifer, DA, also those Charangels. Thank you for your service, Jamie, also 1980s millennials. Thank you for your service, Laura, the libertarian eagle. Hey, thank you for your service, the lawyer down there, lawyer. Thank you for your service, Chuck Smith. He is, he is PIO, also known as Media Hero. Thank you for your service, Cadet, Cadet, deputy right there, Cadet right there, Cadet. Thank you for your service, Scott, the air, the Air Force guy. Thank you for your service, the Marine Corps guy, 0311, basic grunt. Thank you for your service, the baddest sheriff ever, Brandon Bar, also the funny sheriff, knows Al from Duck Dynasty, Uncle Al. Thank you for your service, Bill, the President Bill. Thank you for, thank you for special Steve Smith, the professor. Thank you for your service, Nicholas, the gun collector. Thank you for your service, Carmen Baines, the diversity guy. Thank you for your service, Matt Conan, the farmer, also drive, also drive a foreign Toyota truck. Thank you for your service, Dan Flores, the Star Wars, the Dark Side. Thank you for your service, Max Zizer, the guy, the guy likes numbers. Thank you for your service, everybody. Thank you.
Thanks, Tommy. Next speaker.
Tammy Keiger.
Good afternoon, board members. I'm here with some of the staff from the clerk recorder's office. I'm here on behalf of myself and my coworkers who couldn't be here this afternoon to ask for help and support and finding a solution. You all received an email from our office this morning regarding some concerns at the clerk recorder's office located at 433 Second Street. And we're dealing with what we think are serious health and safety concerns. We have a huge concern with the building itself. It's outdated and in poor condition. We have uneven floors, then windows that shake when trucks go by, sound like they might shatter on us. We have floors lifting in the bathrooms, and most importantly, cracks throughout the Then we have the issue with rodents that we miss deal with almost daily. We came into the office this morning with a horrible smell in our staff room, and yesterday morning came in the office to find a dead mouse under my desk, which still carries the smell of the dead roona after spraying in the area. The email that was sent this morning contained pictures and letters that went to more detail of what we're dealing with at our location. Please note that these issues are not new issues and have been going on for quite some time and now have become a larger issue. As for the safety for both staff and the public, we have homeless in the empty lot that congregate at times in the early morning, coming and going from the levee. Just last night when we left the building, we had multiple vehicles from law enforcement were at the home behind us yet again. Law enforcement makes a visit at least once a week to that house behind us. We invite you to come visit the office to see and talk to the staff about the concerns that we have. We thank you for your ongoing support and hearing us out. We love what we are able to do for our community. Please help us.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Janet Johnson.
I'm Janet Johnson. I'm a Sutter County resident, and I've been here just about all my life, and I'll be 79 in November. Reorganized State of California Ordinance 24 hyphen 03, State of California, Slave Trading Violations of California State Constitution, 1849, Article 1, Section 18, and the United States Constitution, 13th Amendment. As stated by the Office of the Attorney General Rob Bonta, human trafficking is among the world's fastest-growing criminal enterprises and is estimated to be 150 billion a year global industry. It is a form of modern-day slavery that profits from the exploitation of our most vulnerable populations. California, a populous border state with a significant immigrant population and the world's fifth-largest economy, is one of the nation's top destination states for trafficking human beings. In 2018, 1,656 cases of human trafficking were reported in California. Of those cases, 1,226 were sex trafficking cases, 151 were labor trafficking cases, 110 involved both labor and sex trafficking, and in 169 cases, the type of trafficking was not specified. The perpetrators of human trafficking have become more sophisticated and organized, requiring an equally sophisticated response from law enforcement and its partners to disrupt and dismantle their networks. Human trafficking strips victims of their freedoms and violates our nation's promise that every person in the United States is guaranteed basic human rights. It is also a crime. According to World Population Review, Human Trafficking Statistics 2024, California consists- According to World Population Review, Human Trafficking Statistics 2024, California consistently has the highest human trafficking rates in the United States, with 1,334 cases reported in 2020, of which 1,023 were sex trafficking cases. As reported by BedBible.com, California has the most trafficking, and one out of four victims are children who average age is 12 to 14 years. Whereas, as defined by the Order of the Attorney General, Rob Bonta, human trafficking, also known as trafficking in persons or modern-day slavery, is a crime that involves compelling or coercing a person to provide labor or services or to engage in commercial sex acts. And whereas California is one of the nation's top destinations for trafficking human beings, and whereas California has a porous border with sections of inadequate fencing on the southern border as well as access from the Pacific Ocean into miles of unguarded beaches. It is known that thousands of unidentified foreign nationals
Let's wrap it up.
referred to as gotaways enter the state monthly, and many are trafficking humans and drugs.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Lee Wheeler.
It's Lee Wheeler AG. You read the card. Whereas according to the International Labor Organization, forced labor is all work or service which is exacted from any person under the threat of penalty and for which the person has not offered himself or herself voluntarily. This includes situations in which persons are coerced to work through the use of violence or intimidation, or by more subtle means such as manipulated debt, retention of identity papers, or threats of deunification or immigration authorities. And whereas federal law 22 USC Section 7102 defines trafficking in persons as "sex trafficking in which a commercial sex act is induced by force, fraud, or coercion, in which the person induced to perform such an act has not attained 18 years of age," or "the recruitment harboring transportation provision or obtaining of a person for labor or services through the use of force, fraud, or coercion for the purpose of subjection to involuntary servitude, personage, indebted bondage, or slavery." And whereas California Penal Code Section 236.1 states, "Anyone who deprives or violates the personal liberty of another with the intent to obtain forced labor or services, procure or sell the individual for commercial sex, or exploit the individual in obscene manner, is guilty of human trafficking." Depriving or violating a person's liberty includes substantial and sustained restriction of another's liberty accomplished through fraud, deceit, coercion, violence, duress, menace, or threat of unlawful injury to the victim or to another person under circumstances where the person receiving or apprehending the threat reasonably believes that it is likely that the person making the threat would carry it out. However, sex trafficking of juveniles is separately defined as causing, inducing, persuading, or attempting to cause or induce or persuade a minor to engage in a commercial sex act. Forced labor or services include labor or services that are performed or provided by a person and are obtained or maintained through force, fraud, or coercion, or equivalent conduct that would reasonably overbear the will of the person. Be it resolved, the California 1850 Compact Constitution, Article 1, Section 18, neither slavery, slavery, or involuntary servitude except as punishment for a crime whereof the party shall have been duly convicted. Be it further resolved, that the 13th Amendment of the United States Constitution ratified December 6, 1865 states, neither slavery nor involuntary servitude except as a punishment for crime whereof the party shall have been duly convicted shall exist within the United States.
Thank you. Any more speaker cards for?
Yes, our last speaker is Stephanie Lucino.
Hi, do I have to push the button? Okay. I'm Steph, and I'm a Sutter County resident. I'm not exactly a happy camper, and I won't give you the technical stuff because you can't vote on it. I'll just mention a few things. How many of you breathe air? How many of you actually like clean air? And how many of you know those striping in the sky? Some call it chemtrails, some call it comtrails, some call it geoengineering, others just flatly call it striping. Well, that stuff is so egregious that they blew up the Pentagon because somebody found out that close to $3 trillion was missing, and it all went to paying for the UN's spraying of us. That's why we get fires that are 3,500 to 4,000 degrees. It's not good for anybody who breathes air, or drinks water, or eats food. What are you doing to tell them stop it? The other day, there was an orange V in the sky. Of course, the V from other fires made it pretty, and I asked about that, and I got my answer. That was a direction to tell other pilots, "Go that way." I guess there was last-minute ground changes. They are willing to kill us all. Ironically, the doctor who got in 92 the patent to spray us, that was the same year Bill Gates came out on Ted Talks and said, "We need to get rid of 90% of the people." Of course, back then, he said vaccines is a way to do it, and good old Fauci, who's made a couple trillion off it, of course, he's behind it and is very happy about it. Where does that leave us? I challenge you, board, to go say that we, you, were duly elected, except for the fraud. You're elected, and you're responsible for our safe being, and I'm pretty sure all of us breathe air and do not want to breathe in aluminum oxide. And back in the 70s, they determined that the aluminum in underarm deodorant was responsible for a lot more dementia and Alzheimer's. And now we're breathing it aside from using it under our arms? What the heck? What are you doing to protect us? And voting? I do not want to see, I don't know if I'm allowed to express my political opinions, but I don't want to see one of the candidates ruining us even more. 100 million of these insurgents coming in, the gotaways, the danger, the sex trafficking, all of the above. Don't want it here, and they're highly armed and very well-trained from all countries. And our entire 101st Airborne is in the Middle East. All our tanks, you know, Hurlong and all that? All of our tanks, all of our other good stuff? It's gone. We gave it to Ukraine, and now we want to give them missiles to go deep into Russia? We already did an act of war blowing up the pipeline. Keep us safe, please. Get us to paper ballots, one-day voting, so we can be honest and fair.
Thank you. Any other speaker cards? Nope? Okay. Moving on to consent calendar. Consent calendar groups together those items of which are considered non-controversial or which are prior policy direction have been given to the staff that only require routine action by the board. The chair will advise the audience that any matter may be adopted in one total motion. However, the board may add its options or upon a request of a member of the public, consider any matter separately. Is there any speaker cards for? Nope?
Through the chair, I'd like to pull item number 13.
Pull number 13.
Yes, thank you.
And anything else?
Through the chair. Remove approval of consent, items 1 through 20, less 113.
We have a motion of the second? All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion to pass unanimously. Okay, number 13.
Roll call? Roll call vote, or no? Do we need a roll call? Never mind. No?
We gotta unanimous vote. Okay, number 13. Nick, do you want to take?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah. Neil, I know this is something that Caltrans is asking us to do, but I would like to have an explanation from them actually before we approve it, because I really don't think that it's necessary, because there's not much traffic on those southbound lanes. So, I don't know. What do you think we should do? Do we contact them and bring them in here, or?
Well, certainly. Good afternoon, Chair and Supervisors, and yes, this was a stop sign that was requested by Caltrans due to their improvements that they're making at the Live Oak Boulevard and Eager Road intersection, because they're going to have the northbound left turn lane have no restrictions. So that was why they wanted the southbound stop sign in place. Certainly, through your board, we can reach back out to Caltrans and request further information from them. There's plenty of time. They just were looking to have our department bring this before your consideration prior to them kind of starting their construction on that project. But certainly, there's time if you'd like it to...
So maybe we can ask for a motion for a continuance for what? Maybe two meetings from now? Would that give them enough time, do you think?
Certainly sufficient.
Okay. Stephanie, what's the date on the next? Oh, sorry.
Next meeting?
Oh, no, two meetings. That'll give them a month.
October 22nd.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for a continuance till October 22nd.
Second motion.
Thank you.
We have a motion of the second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously, and that will be brought, item number 13, will be brought back on the 22nd. Okay, that concludes the consent calendar. We're moving on to Water Works 1. We'll adjourn the Board of Supervisors, convene the Water Works 1 Governing Board. We'll let the roll call stand. Is there any public comment? No speaker cards? Okay, moving on. Items 1 through 3 are on consent.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Move to approve the consent calendar?
Second.
We have a motion of the second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Same sign? Motion passed unanimously. Okay, we're now adjourning the Water Works 1 Board of Directors and reconvening the Board of Supervisors. We're going to let the roll call stand, and we're now doing public hearings. You guys want to start with that one? Number 22.
Public hearing to consider project number U 23-0010, Siller, a request for a general plan amendment from agriculture.
Okay. Oh, Neil's not doing this one. Okay, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Chair and Supervisors. Ravina Soroya, Associate Planner with Development Services. This project is a request for a general plan amendment and rezone for 5.46 acres of land located within the rural community of Sutter. The subject parcel is located on the east side of Acacia Avenue approximately .4 miles north of State Highway 20, as you can see on here. The site is currently zoned agriculture and is designated as Ag 40 by the general plan. The parcel is surrounded by ag zoning to the north and east sides and is surrounded by a mix of light industrial, public, commercial industrial, general commercial, and recreation zoning to the south and west. Following the latest general plan update in 2011, the parcel was re-zoned from general industrial to agriculture. The applicant is now proposing to amend the general plan designation to industrial commercial and the zoning to commercial industrial. The proposed commercial industrial designation is applied primarily within growth areas as designated in the general plan, which includes the community of Sutter. This proposal is consistent with several land use policies outlined in the staff report, which encourage commercial and industrial development within growth areas and encourages these uses to be located within the general vicinity of existing industrial and commercial land uses. Much of this area is surrounded by industrial and commercial land use, so the proposal is consistent with the general vicinity. An initial study in trip generation analysis was prepared for this project in accordance with SEQA, which determined that the proposed land use change would not have a significant impact on the environment with 10 mitigation measures applied. This project was brought before the Planning Commission on August 21, 2024, and the commission voted 7-0 unanimously to recommend approval of the project. We have not received any opposition of the project at this time, so staff is recommending that the Board of Supervisors approves this project with the findings listed in the staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
They will now open a public hearing. Ask, are there any speaker cards?
Yes, Chair, we have one. John Patrick.
Okay.
I just wanted to say I'm in support of the project. I have property near there and did a little development a few years past, and I want to support his project.
Thank you. Any other speaker cards? Any members of the public wish to address this item? Seeing none?
Through the chair.
We need to go ahead. We need to close the public hearing. Okay. Close the public hearing. Now bring it back to the board. Is there any discussion from the board?
Through the chair. I'll second.
I do have one question. When you get ready. Okay, we have a motion of the second, but let me ask a quick question to staff. So the surrounding parcels, are they all zoned commercial yet, or are they still ag? Some of the surrounding ones.
As you can see, the area in green, that is ag on the zoning map. So, you know, we have general industrial across the way on Acacia Avenue, and just south of there, you have some commercial industrial and general commercial zoning. And that's the different colors indicated on the map.
Have we talked to the? I really think it makes sense that all that is commercial industrial. I don't understand why we still have it zoned ag, and I guess unless the owner, once it changed, it's not going to get changed, correct?
Well, the proposal was just for those five or so acres there that that property owner, you know, wants to change the land use. We can take a look potentially at the surrounding area with the next general plan update, if that's something that you'd be supportive of.
Yeah, I was just going to say through the chair, this is my district here, and you know, the signs have been up for almost six months now, and I've had numerous phone calls, and people ask, "Really? That's not commercial industrial?" I said, "So the warehouses are zoned ag, but the orchards are zoned commercial industrial. Sure it's not flip-flop?" But so, as long as I've been there, and I was born 1980, that's always been a warehouse, commercial industrial. So, in essence, we're taking it back to what it was before, and it was converted. So I believe it's going to be a great thing for Sutter County and down the road. It's a good thing now, and I'm in full support of it, and so are the people that have asked me questions on the project.
I was just wondering about the rest of them, but anyway, I guess we'll deal with those later, possibly. Okay, we have a motion of the second and no more discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Same sign? Most passes unanimously. Okay.
An ordinance of the county of Sutter amending the zoning of certain parcels in the county.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll move on to the, that's all you need to cover, right, for that one? Okay, thank you. Okay, next we'll do the Sutter Point, and Neil, you're going to take that one?
So actually, I wanted to introduce that our principal planner, Arwin Wach, will do the majority of the presentation, and then I'll be available maybe for some comments from the department and answer any questions that your board may have.
Good afternoon. My name is Arwin Wach. I'm the principal planner for Sutter County. The proposal before you is a request for various entitlements to refine Phases 2 and 3 of the Lakeside at Sutter Point project. The project site is located in South Sutter County, north of Riega Road, generally south of Sankey Road, east of State Highway 99, and west of Natomas Road in the Pleasant Grove, For some background, in 2009, Sutter County approved high-level entitlements to allow the Sutter Point-specific plan, which provided for 17,500 residential dwelling units on 2,900 acres, 50 million square feet of employment center and other non-residential uses on 3,600 acres, elementary and high schools, other community buildings, parks, and open space on 1,000 acres, institutional uses, commercial uses, lakes and detentions, and major roads. In 2014 and 2020, Sutter County approved Tier 2 entitlements to allow for the future development of the Lakeside at Sutter Point area, which is approximately 873 acres, which would include a total of 3,388 single-family and 399 multifamily homes, 44 acres of employment center, 25 acres of commercial, 59 acres of parks, 54 acres of open space, and up to 2K through 8 schools. The underground infrastructure is currently under construction for Phase 1 of the development at the southern portion of the development. The property owner is now proposing amendments to Phases 2 and 3 of the Lakeside at Sutter Point development to refine their proposal to meet the current school site requirements of 20 acres instead of 16, and to increase the number of residential units in Phases 2 and 3 due to a slight reduction of units in Phase 1. and to increase the number of residential units in Phases 2 and 3 due to a slight reduction of units in Phase 1. The requested entitlements include rezone, large lot tentative map, and small lot tentative maps. The current proposal, U 220036, anticipates the development of 2,143 single-family homes, no medium-density cluster homes, and maintains the 11.1 acre high-density residential lot with a total of 206 units. The development is proposing to increase the elementary school, the K through 8, from 16 acres to 20 acres, and move it to the east to the middle of the development. The commercial and employment center lots will remain unchanged at 16 acres and 18 acres. Overall, the proposal would result in a reduction in the total amount of LDR acreage and increase in the amount of MDR acreage, resulting in an increase of approximately 26 units for the Phases 2 and 3 of the development. Overall, the proposal is consistent with the intentions of the Lakeside at Sutter Point development. As part of the environmental review and an addendum to the 2019 Sutter Point specific plan, EIR, was prepared for this project in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act and the guidelines. It was determined that changes introduced by the refinement of Phases 2 and 3 of Lakeside project and/or new circumstances relevant to the project would not, as compared to the 2019, excuse me, 2009 EIR, the 2014 addendum to the EIR, and the 2020 addendum to the EIR, would result in a new significant impact would not result in a newer significant impact that are substantially more severe than significant impacts previously disclosed. In addition, there is no new information of substantial importance showing that the proposed Lakeside project refinement would have significant effects not previously discussed, or that any previously examined significant effects would be substantially more severe than the significant effects shown in the previous environmental documents. The applicable mitigation measures from the prior environmental reviews that applied to the project are listed under each environmental category that were analyzed in the addendum. No new mitigation measures are included beyond those reviewed and analyzed with the original or the previous Lakeside at Sutter Point project, which was EU 19008. There has been some discussion and concerns raised regarding school mitigation within the application, excuse me, between the applicant and the existing school districts, which Neil Hay will be stepping in to address further.
Thank you, Chair and Supervisors. I think we'll try to scroll to one of the, kind of the conditions of approval that's in the packet. Obviously, it's, there's quite a volume of paperwork that's involved within this action, but I think we can skip through to some items. So briefly to explain, so previously, my department has brought a number of other documents before your board that essentially entitled the builders, the applicant, to move forward with essentially the Phase 1 of their project, which was approximately 1,100 active adult dwelling units. So the matter before you is for essentially the Phase 2 and 3, which are the remainder of the, which termed the Lakeside project. And it, you know, essentially, Arwin listed out the various acreage and dwelling units that have, that are going to be included in that. And the document that's essentially included with the package, these essentially conditions of approval, for the most part are a carry-forward document that referenced the various prior approvals by the county and the prior documents, and these are all the things that the builders, the developers would have to do prior to, you know, certain phases of the project. And probably one of the most, you know, I'm sure as we're all aware, a contentious item is the mitigation with the school districts. And so to be clear, there's two school districts. There's the Pleasant Grove School District, which is an elementary school district located on Housy Road, you know, north of the area. And then there is the East Nicholas High School District that's located on, what, East Nicholas, on Nicholas Avenue, even further north of the area. And to date, the, you know, both school districts have been negotiating with the builders, the developers, because they have what's termed a school mitigation agreement. It was, I want to say June 2008 is when it was, or 2009 was when it was essentially signed. And it essentially said that, you know, both school districts would work with the developers to mitigate the impacts of development, essentially the students generated by the homes to be constructed. So with the Phase 1, the builders went with an active adult community with the premise that those properties are deed restricted to not have students, both elementary or high school. So the document before you, you know, to our, to this point, there has not been a, you know, mitigation agreement and an update between the builders and either school district. But the conditions of approval, this 51A, there's two conditions, 51A and 51B. 51A relates to the Pleasant Grove School District, which is the elementary school district. And they provided the county with a variety of language tied to specific numbers of dwelling units regarding this phase of the development, Phase 2 and 3, as to, that essentially provide them with a timeline that they would need to prepare their school facilities for students. The original Sutter Point specific plan has what's termed a school generation rate or student generation rate, as to how many students all these units are going to generate and provide to the schools. So between the builders and the school district, Pleasant Grove School District, they've come to, you know, at least agree on the school generation rate, student generation rate, and they have provided, you know, what essentially we would say would be triggers before, that need to be resolved so that they can, like I say, provide the necessary school facilities. And so that's incorporated into these conditions. The language for the East Nicholas High School District, it, with our department essentially tried to simplify it. We've had, I'll say, you know, less conversations, we've been shared their facilities, master plan, and what they think it would take for a full build-out of this Phases 2 and 3. And so we tried to simplify it because we're, it seems that the student generation rates are still, haven't been resolved. And so the actual conditions, 51B for the school district, has much more, I'll say finality, as just there are still remaining issues that need to be resolved regarding the mitigation between the school district and the builders. One thing to make very clear is that with your board's consideration of these tentative Phase 2, 3 maps today, it does not authorize my department to issue building permits. So the builders could not come to my department seeking to do any construction. What's currently happening at the site is there is a lot of underground infrastructure construction going on for the Phase 1, the active adult community, but there's no construction taking place at the Phase 2 and the Phase 3 areas. One of the reasons why your consideration of these maps is important is that there are a number of financial documents for the project that need to be updated. So originally, when the specific plan was prepared, and it, you know, kind of came before your board back in November of 2020, it included a lot of what the potential costs of infrastructure and county services would be. And my department has been working in conjunction with the county administrator's office, as well as with the fire chief and with our sheriff, to kind of come up with the staffing that's needed. Because although this development, you know, certainly has some very specific geographical borders, these maps that you're adopting, the services that are going to be provided ultimately should benefit all the residents of the southern county, right? That there will be better fire service, there will be better law enforcement service. But in order for my department to continue to process the financial documents with consultants, we need to have some clarity as to the phase of the development and just the stage of, you know, how much is going to be constructed. Because, for example, we could go to all the effort, develop a fee, and if the maps aren't approved or the number of lots aren't approved, then the fees will be all wrong. And so what we're trying to do is at least by your consideration of this map, it at least allows the builders to have an idea of how many lots are going to be approved and what they'd be able to build upon. And the county has a sense as to the amount of services that we're going to have to provide, right? There's the Phase 1 map with your consideration and the approval of the active adult, it has a lot of gated communities. So there is a lot of, for example, public works infrastructure that may not be maintained by us because it'll be maintained by the property owners and an HOA. But there still will be main streets and, you know, arterial roadways to be considered. Additionally, all those streets though still need to receive emergency services and other type of services from the county, parks and recreation, all those things. So essentially, we've, my department, we brought it through the Planning Commission, they made a recommendation before your board, and we've tried to bring it before your board and give you a sense as to kind of where things stand, is that the conditions of approval are our kind of the best estimate and the best way to consider what's been said in the past. We feel it still protects the interests of the builders and of the school districts, right? There's still language as to what needs to occur, and it's our hope that they will continue to talk and negotiate and come to some resolutions prior to our department obviously needing to issue building permits because if it doesn't, they don't come to those resolutions, then these conditions state we're not able to issue the building permits. And like I say, with the condition for the elementary school, it clears, it very clearly states the number of units and stuff. With the high school, although it does not clarify the number of units, my department, you know, we do capital improvement projects, we have an understanding, you know, and a sense of what it would take to design and construct necessary improvements at a school site, and we're hopeful that there will be ongoing communication, you know, with our department. But like I said, the main thing I wanted to clarify is that your consideration of this map does not authorize us to issue building permits. There will be a number of other actions that my department will need to bring before the Planning Commission, ultimately before your board. There will be, you know, financing districts and the financial documents. Eventually, there have to be final maps, this is a tentative map, eventually there needs to be final maps. So there will be other documents that come before your board, and it's obviously hopeful that we'd be able to give you an update on the discussions between the builders, developers, and the school district. And with that, we're happy to answer your questions, or you can have the public hearing.
Are there any questions before we move on? We do have a presentation by George Carpenter, the applicant, and he, that's about a 10-minute plan, right? I mean, and I think it's a video presentation as well. Think, do you think the podium, George? Probably that one, probably easier. Because you can direct staff if you have questions on your video.
Well, good afternoon, members of the board, Chairman Conant. I'm George Carpenter with Wind Communities. Also here with me today are a number of members of our team from Wind Communities, our colleagues at Lennar, and our consultant team and attorney team. This is really important to us, and, you know, I take great pride coming before this board. Having been born here as a fifth-generation Sutter County resident, I always liked coming before the, you know, my local community here. So today, the, what's before you, the staff gave you a pretty good presentation. This is the part of the Sutter Point project that we own, which is called the Lakeside, it's about 900 acres. And to rewind the clock a little bit, when the Board of Supervisors approved our Tier 2 entitlements in 2020, they only approved the first phase of tentative maps. So it was supposed to be about almost 3,400 single-family lots, but only 1,200 of those lots were approved in the first batch because we weren't sure what the second Phases 2 and 3 were going to look like at the time. So today is those Phase 2, 3 maps. In 2022, we came back to the Board of Supervisors because at the time, we hadn't worked out deals with the school districts, and we said, well, we're interested in starting infrastructure construction, including construction of the sewer line, if we know that we could start with an active adult community and then build Phases 2 and 3 as conventional housing. And the board approved that development agreement amendment, so we were able to start construction. We graded the property now, as most of you have driven by there, there's a ton of work going on out there, and I'll talk about that in just a second. But that decision in March 22 allowed us to start proceeding forward. So it's important to us today that the board approve these maps because we are under construction out there. I wanted to show you the reason, staff mentioned some land use changes, and the changes aren't big, you know, you look at these two maps and they kind of pass the squint test, but we did have to, there are some details that go along with it. The most important thing is that when we realized we were building an active adult community in Phase 1, we wanted to relocate the school site to be more centrally located in the community, and that's what you see on the right side. We located it along Spine Street, and we located it so that it's a little bit easier for every part of the community to get to it. And when we relocated it, then we said, well, then we want to move some of our parks and redistribute those a little bit. So that's really what you see when you're looking at the revisions of this map. We did increase the size, we worked with the Pleasant Grove School District on both the configuration of this, the size of this, the location of it. And when you see in just a minute, you'll see how we tried to get connectivity to it. In this exhibit, this is the, this is a blow-up of the map. And I threw this on here for two, just kind of two things. You can't see the roads in the land plan, here you can see the network of roads. And I want to point to, okay, you can see the Spine Street that runs north and south. There's the blue school site, and then over to the west of that is the Loop Road. And that Loop Road kind of goes all the way around the community so that it really helps bring people to the school site and making that a central part of the project. So, you know, we're really looking forward to working with Pleasant Grove to be able to make that work. One other thing I just noted, the north end of that property is the Brown property, that's a multifamily affordable housing site. And just showing that we're trying to look at all levels of housing here. This is just how the Phase 2, 3 area connects to Phase 1, just to give you a sense that we'll be able to take advantage of the infrastructure that's built in Phase 1. And this is the exhibit that shows the connectivity that we really tried to develop so that, you know, increasing pedestrian, bike, and vehicle connectivity to all parts of the community so that you could get around all of Phase 2, 3, you could get to the north end of it, and then you could get back down into Phase 1, and Phase 1 could get into Phase 2. So just wanted to really point out the connectivity there. If you were walking along that green space, it, I wanted you to have a sense of what this, what it would look like. There wouldn't be water necessarily in it, but it would be kind of a wet area. It'd be have a paved trail around it, so it'd be a really nice amenity. And the number one amenity that new homebuyers are looking for are access to open space and trails. And so that's what you see in this exhibit here. There are some small parks, and this will give you a sense of what the parks would look like, they'd be programmed for short stays, they wouldn't be large parks. And to give you a sense of what it'd look like in some of the sidewalks, and if you're going to walk along the lake community, that's the image on the right there. I did want to give you a sense of the housing types, we're going to be doing all sorts of different housing types. There's going to be larger lots for larger homes, there'll be some smaller lots for smaller homes. And here you can see, like, there'll be homes that back up to the open space, and so you can see this is kind of an image of what a backyard might look like. Well, that's not the exhibit I thought it was going to be. Well, that is supposed to be a drainage exhibit, and I'm not sure what happened to the PowerPoint. But what I wanted to do is talk a little bit about the infrastructure that's being put in. What this is supposed to be showing you is a very comprehensive drainage infrastructure program that serves the entire Lakeside area, and it takes the drainage from the far north end, takes it all the way down through into the lake at the bottom end of the project, and then ultimately out into the Reclamation District 1,000 channels. And that's, we're spending about $16 million on the backbone infrastructure. And then this is the sewer right here, the sewer line, this shows you how all the sewer system connects through the entire plan area, ultimately goes down to a sewer lift station that then goes into the Seven Mile Sewer Line being constructed down to Alberta. And this is going in at about a cost of $34 million. And then this is the water system, and you'll see here, there are, there's a well site, there's storage tanks, and a booster pump station. And this is going to be owned and operated by Golden State Water Company. We have to build it for them, and then we give it to them, and then they own and operate it. And this is going in at about a cost of $26 million. And then in addition to, I didn't put an exhibit up here for roads, but for roads, we're doing about $6 million worth of roads for the major Spine Streets, improvements to Rego Road, and then I think we spent about $10 million on the interchange, just to give you a sense of scale for what's been, what's been spent out here. I know there were some questions about public safety, and I want to address that real quick. There, the, we have been working with county staff over the last, well, since 2020, to actively determine what are the public safety requirements out here because we're basically building a new city, there's no, there's no There's no, there's no public service built in. I know the sheriff has a beat down here, and Pleasant Grove has a fire department down here, but they're not ready for urban service-type plans. And so we worked with the chief and the sheriff, came up with a plan. County staff has been, the Planning Department Development Services staff has been working. They have a consultant working for them. That consultant prepared a set of tables that showed a scale of payments that we would do, a phase in of staff, a phase in of equipment being purchased. We already purchased the fire truck, the construction of a permanent fire station here in this Phase One area. And so there's been quite a bit of thought given to that. Based on that, the county staff study that was done in February this year, we put together a reimbursement and funding agreement that we submitted to the county in May. We haven't heard back any feedback on that. We did hear in the last 30 days, there may be some concerns. And so we're happy to sit down and work with, you know, whether it's the fire, or the interim fire chief, whoever, or the sheriff, happy to always sit down and talk about public safety needs, you know, understand the importance of that. The, then, there was also a question, you know, if today, if we get approved today, what happens next? And Neil and Arwin talked a little bit about that. There's a lot of work to do. The county needs to adopt community facility district goals and policies because we need to sell bonds to finance infrastructure, and the county does get a payment out of that as reimbursement for the interchange. There's also, we're going to be assessed a special tax to make sure that the County General Fund doesn't get impacted by our project. And there's a handful of other things. There's an HOA Homeowners Association Maintenance Agreement to make sure that all of the public spaces are maintained so those don't fall into the county's lap. And there was a couple other items. The park development agreement, so the parks I showed you, when do those need to be built? What facilities go into those? All those sorts of things still need to be done as part of our implementation phase. So today's approval is, you know, just one more step along the way. I did want to address the school issue. It's, it came up at the Planning Commission. And first, I want to say that we definitely want to try to come to arrangement with both school districts. And it's been difficult because these are complex topics. The, I was not happy with what the Planning Commission recommended to you in conditions 51A and 51B. I don't think they were legal. We gave authority to county council on that, but they got adopted. In the meantime, since then, I've worked with Pleasant Grove representatives. And so the condition 51A that addresses Pleasant Grove is something that we both agreed on. And so I hope they represent that to you today. With respect to the East Nicholas Agreement, we didn't agree to that condition 51B that staff's recommending, so I just want to make sure that's on the record. There's been some discussion about whether we owe East Nicholas $90,000 and we don't. And East Nicholas, they have attorneys working for them, and their attorneys made multiple mistakes in administering a funding and reimbursement agreement. It's a funding and reimbursement agreement, just like what we have with the county, just like what we have with Pleasant Grove. Both the county and Pleasant Grove have no problem working with it and following the guidelines of it. East Nicholas violated the terms of it, but we still paid one time but said, don't do it again. And then they did it again. And so we refused to pay because they didn't follow the terms. And so, you know, I just want you to just know that we, we really feel strongly about that issue. You may also hear that East Nicholas gave us a proposal, and they did give us a proposal in August of 2022 for $120 million to upgrade the existing campus. That's like $480,000 a student. It was not, and so I will just say that you will hear that we didn't give any response to that, but we did give a response to that. The reason that that was so expensive was that East Nicholas allows 60% of their student body to be inter-district transfers. And so they're having us oversize their campus. There was also a talk about a charter school there and having 400 kids instead of 250 kids. All these factors come to make the school facilities be more than what's needed. Additionally, during 2020, 2021, 2022, we made multiple proposals to the school district, but those, we never heard back except for in May of 2021, the school board president at the time told us, don't address the school board members, only work through our attorneys and consultants. And so, you know, finally, you might hear that, that, you know, there's a, if you approve this today, it's going to allow students to be generated by our project, and the district's not going to have time to build. But the development agreement's still in place. You won't approve final maps for conventional housing unless we get an agreement with the school district. So, you know, I just, I just wanted to touch on all those points because they had come up at the Planning Commission. I'll just end with, we submitted these maps two years ago, and so we'd asked that you approve them today. And we'd like to move forward and keep putting investment into Sutter County. We've been at this a long time. It's been 20 years since we were at the board for starting out on this project. So I will end there. I'll happy to answer any questions, and I would like to reserve the opportunity to come back up in case there's anything I need to address after public comment.
Any questions, the board from, George is still up there?
Just through the chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
I guess where do the amenities fit in on that plan? Like clubhouse, pools, pickleball courts, and those types of things? Where do they, where do they fit up there?
I would direct you to, can you see there's a body of water that's kind of in the lower left-hand corner on that exhibit? And it's kind of almost like a kidney shape. Oh, is that, oh, there we go. Okay. Yeah, so, so that, that right there is, that's a lake at the bottom end. On the south of this, right here, is, I think this is about a 13-acre. And I don't want to call it a regional park. Maybe I'd call it a community park. But this would be programmed with the type of active amenities that you're talking about. And so that is actually in part of the Phase One area.
All right, and then the 18 acres of commercial development that's planned for Phase One, when would that start?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't recall it being 18 acres. I thought it was 10 acres, but you may have me on that. I don't know what the, when that's planned to start. It's going to depend on, it's going to be market-driven, you know, depending on how quickly the project absorbs. If we're able to build conventional housing, then it's going to absorb faster, and commercial activity will come out there faster. The, there is the employment site, the commercial, the purple part that's on our Phase One area. I don't have it on this map here. I can back up a little bit and show it to you. Here we go. This, right down here, this purple area, this area will have infrastructure and utilities to it. And so if there are businesses that need a 20, 25-acre site, an employer that wants to come in, that area will be right on Rego Road. It'll have access, utilities, infrastructure to it. So that will be something that'll be available, and it'd be something that, you know, we should be marketing right now, really.
All right, and then, sorry, last question is, you referred to something about the 51A, 51B, something that you guys refused to agree upon. Could you clarify that again real quick?
Okay, so Neil, when he got up here, he talked about two conditions of approval. One was condition 51A, which addresses our need for a school mitigation agreement with Pleasant Grove, and 51B, which is a school mitigation agreement with East Nicholas. With respect to 51A and Pleasant Grove, we have agreed to that, and that is language that reflects efforts by myself and Lindsay, the attorney for the school district. With respect to East Nicholas, that condition of approval, we do not agree to.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll open the public hearing now. And I know that Tom Angler has his speaker card, right? And Tom would like to address the board first?
Through the chair.
Yeah.
I have to leave at 4:30, so I'm just giving everyone FYI. All right?
Okay.
So, yeah, that's what happens when you're parent-in-law, got kids and don't have a babysitter.
Okay. I don't think we're in.
Timmy's rich.
No. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. Chairman, members of the board, Tom Angler, East Nicholas High School District Board President. So I'll run through these. A lot of these are just background repeats of what you've seen before, so we'll get through them fairly quickly. But basically, bottom line is, Sutter Point, the developers are supposed to enter into supplemental mitigation agreements with both school districts. That's been agreed to since 2009. Background, and I bring this up, November 2004, Measure M passed. 2009, the specific plan was approved. Both of those plans emphasize that there would be no impacts to the existing community, right? No cost impacts, no development impacts, developer would mitigate all those. Now we're moving forward without that happening. We signed a, you and the developer signed a development agreement in 2009 that said they would enter into the supplemental mitigation agreements with us. You even included those supplemental mitigation agreements as attachments. So I highlight here at the bottom, the conditions of approval were established to allow both districts adequate time between map approvals and building permits to plan, design, permit, and construct facilities, more importantly, to seek financing. Because we're not expecting the developer to pick up 100% of the costs. I've made this point before, there's state funding available, there may be other financing mechanisms. We need time to get those things in place. We don't have time after maps are approved to get these facilities designed, permitted, and constructed in time. I did talk to somebody who was in the negotiations with the developer in 2009 on behalf of the school district, and they said at the time, the school districts were pushing for supplemental mitigation agreements within two or three years of signing the original mitigation agreement. The developers pushed back because the market was not good at the time. So everybody agreed we needed time to do it, which is how we came about of conditioning the map approvals. So this is just some key points on the master mitigation agreement. I've run through these with you before. But I, I just wanted to point out that, actually, I'll just keep moving. I throw in existing facilities here. This one highlights, you can see, this is out of our facilities plan. These are the facilities we have. The state says you need 960 square feet for a, for a standard classroom in California. Only six of our 15 classrooms meet that requirement. All of those are portables that are now kind of at the end of their useful life and need to be replaced. But with that, we can house 375 kids. Our enrollment's slightly over 300 now, but we can't really house 375 kids. It's probably more like 340. We haven't got to the negotiation point where, what does that mean for the developer? At the bottom are the essential facilities required by the state. You can see, we're already undersized on one of our facilities as the development continues. If we get 250 kids, we've got to upsize a whole bunch more stuff. When we get to the 800-student enrollment, we've got to upsize everything. And the reason that we used 550 students and 800 students in the facilities plan is because we're required by the master mitigation agreement to take up to 400 students from the development, right? We're not saying that's all coming from Lakeside. But as part of the facility plan, we had to plan what our campus would need to look like if and when we take all 400 of those kids. So we're not saying Lakeside owes us all that. We're saying the facilities plan says that. Lakeside will pay their fair share portion, and we set up a supplemental mitigation agreement to make that happen. So these are our existing facilities. You can, you've got copies of the presentation. You can look through and see where all the problem sites are on our campus. It's full of them. Most notably, the blue area, which covers about almost half of our campus, is flood plain. So anything, we cannot put students in that area. We would have to elevate above the flood plain, which adds significant costs. So we're trying to avoid that. We're trying to move other facilities into the flood plain, the M&amp;O building, the bus parking, things like that, so that we have more room for students on campus. That drives up costs. Student generation rates, you can see the January '22 projections, assuming 2,700 single-family residential units, gets us 464 over our base. The developer said we'll limit that to 250, so we gave them another part of the plan for 250 kids. And now they're telling us they're willing to limit it to as little as 700 single-family residential units. And with that, I know that you're in a hurry to approve these maps to get the financing in place, but if they go from the maps they just showed you with all those residential units to only 700, what happens? Now all those financing plans you just put in place are no good. They're already outdated. All the plans you put in place, the maps are going to have to be redrawn, they're going to have to be amended. You're going to have to come back and do this again. So I'm trying to figure out, why are we in such a hurry? So this, out of our facilities plan, I touch on this. This is the 250 additional students. I call it 175 to 250 because could be more, could be less. So we show about $57 million of improvements needed. What we don't talk about is some of these facilities might not have to be built for this. We don't know what the state's going to tell us. We include them for planning purposes. But if we can get out of enlarging some of these things, if we can get out of modernizing some of these things, these costs come way down. We're willing to do that. We've talked to the developer about it. We just need them back to the table. This is the next increment to get the total commitment. Lakeside's saying they're not going to do this, so 60 million of the 120 million they quote you all the time isn't even on them. So some points on the facility needs is, we have not received any comments on the facility plan from the developer. He told you they gave us comments? They didn't. All they said is it costs too much. And we said, well, it costs what it costs. We don't control those costs. That's all state and current, current stuff. We've got flexibility. We're willing to have flexibility. We're willing to take looks at the facility plan based on comments from the developer. We're willing to look at, talk to the state about facilities we may or may not need. Everything's scalable. If only, if they send us 100 new kids, maybe we can get away with only building four or five new classrooms at $500,000 apiece. That's a lot more reasonable. Maybe we only have to enlarge a parking lot or two, and now we might be able to get the cost down 10, 12, 13 million. But we've got to have those conversations to get there. And then bottom line is, state funding usually costs, or covers 40% to 50% of the costs, but we need time to get the state funding. So I throw this slide up here just because there's a lot of misconceptions out there about where schools get their funding. We do not receive any funding from county taxes. So to say that all this development's going to increase taxes to the county, that's great for the county, it does nothing for the school district. All our funding is from average daily attendance, bonds, state bonds, state funding programs that come out. So all of that is relevant here. So we did provide them a draft supplemental mitigation agreement at their request in August of 2022. They did not give us any comments on that. Key terms were the agreement on the number of single-family residential versus age-restricted units to determine student generation, right? We've got to come up with what this true generation numbers are to build a plan to figure out financing. Updated facilities plan based on those agreed numbers. Cost to developer share, including timing of contributions. It might not be that we need all the money upfront. It may be, we need it over time, and we can come up with a financing plan that works for them. And then timing a true-up for actual cost facilities and generation numbers. So they bring up the inter-district transfers all the time. I'll make it clear that alls we say is, we are not telling kids that have gone to our feeder schools for eight years, or that are at the high school now that, sorry, you've got to go because we've got other people coming in. That's all we've said. Generate, the inter-district transfer numbers are going to be what they're going to be. We're not going to limit them. We're not going to, we may cap them. That'd be fine. Cap them at what our number is now. That could be something reasonable. But we're not going to tell kids that they can't come to our school because the developer needs the space. So on the inter-district transfers, yes, all three of our feeder schools and East Nicholas are typically at 60% or above in inter-district transfers. Most are multi-generational with family, siblings, or alumni. Their, their family members graduated, so they want to come to East Nicholas. That's great. Some are seeking our career technical education programs. We've got great shop, we've got great heavy equipment, great ag programs. So the kid, we get kids from all over that want to do those things. Like I just said, we have, we've been unwilling to commit to forcing those students out, but we're willing to talk about, should there be a cap? Should there be, you know, more frequent generation true-ups? Whatever we need to do, we can do that. So here's just some pictures of our current campus. These were taken in the last couple weeks, just to show you that there's not a lot of room on the campus for the 300 kids now. That's a classroom. Imagine there's, what, 18 kids in that class? Imagine 25, maybe 30. Student drop-off and pickup, I can tell you, because I drop my daughter off almost every day, that the line is out onto the public road. That's a busy road, a lot of truck traffic coming from Lincoln. It's a pretty dangerous situation. It's a pretty dangerous situation. We've got a bus turnaround that doesn't meet state requirements. So next steps. Alls we're asking is for you guys to delay the map approvals. Get the developer back to the table and tell them that they need to work with us to get to a mitigation agreement. We've been talking over the last couple of months. We're a little bit closer. It takes a little bit of time. They've never left the table with Pleasant Grove. They've been negotiating with them the whole time that, you know, the two-year hiatus we've had with them over this reimbursement issue, but they still don't have a mitigation agreement with Pleasant Grove either. We need the time to plan, design, and construct these facilities. It's three- to five-year minimum process. You approve maps today, they're already saying they'll plan on building houses in twenty-seven. We're way behind the eight ball. We want to settle the deposit reimbursement issues so we can allow our consultants to get back to work. The developer keeps saying that they don't owe us that money, but we did the work they asked us to do. We did a facilities plan. We drafted a supplemental mitigation agreement. We gave them a bill. They didn't like that we gave them a bill after the fact instead of before and get an estimate before like everybody else was apparently doing. We'd been doing that for five years, and this was the first we'd heard it, and so they walked away. We need to finalize and execute the supplemental mitigation agreement. Last point I'll make is, we hear about not having good faith negotiations. I'll just point out, if anybody's not having, not acting in good faith here, it's the developer. If they were acting in good faith, they'd uphold the contract that they signed in two thousand nine with us. If they negotiated, we should have had a mitigation agreement apparently fifteen, twelve or fifteen years ago, but we negotiated with them because development wasn't great, and we just agreed that we need to have these before development occurs, which means before tentative and final maps. If they were acting in good faith, they wouldn't have defaulted on the reimbursement agreement. They might have said, hey, look, come to the board, give us something in writing. We'd really like you to start submitting your, your stuff this way or that way. We know you've been doing it this way for five years, but we need you to change now and, you know, work with us to get there. They didn't, they weren't willing to work with us. They sent us a letter, we're in breach of contract, we're not paying you the ninety thousand dollars we owe you, and here we are, two years later, waiting for the courts to settle that. So in closing, I'm just hoping that you guys will, will consider just delaying this. Delay it six months. Delay it three months. Give us some time to get back to the table with the developer, get an agreement in place, and move forward so we don't have to keep doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Through the chair. Speaker.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So the, the inter-district transfers you said were sixty percent, so that's a hundred and eighty of your three hundred students. Do you have any numbers from other school districts of what their percentage rate is?
We only pay attention ourselves and the feeder schools. Inter-district transfers are getting complicated by other state laws. There's district-to-choice rules that are changing, there's inter-district rules. Some of the districts that we typically get a lot of students from, like Marysville and Wheatland, are starting to try to deny inter-district transfers because they need the enrollment numbers. So there, there's a lot of speculation as to, you know, you can't predict what our inter-districts are going to do. Alls we're saying is, we don't want to tell kids, sorry, you can't come here. I know you've been at the feeder school for eight years expecting to come here, but sorry, we're giving your space to the developers.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, we have other speaker cards, correct?
Yes, Chair, we have five more speakers.
Okay, if I just speak from here?
Yes, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, Neil.
Hello, I'm Neil Stinson, Superintendent for the East Nicholas High School District. East Nicholas High School is the smallest public high school in Sutter County. School is originally established in nineteen twenty-four and has been at its present site since nineteen seventy-four. For the past twenty-plus years, we have an enrollment that has ranged from two hundred and eighty-five to three hundred and twenty-eight students. And as you've heard, approximately sixty percent of our students are out of our district through either the inter-district agreements or district-of-choice program. Many of these out-of-district students are generational or children of alumni who live outside our boundary due to housing difficulties within our district, as well as students of families that live in neighboring school district attendance areas that have high schools that are a minimum of three and up to seven times larger than our school. They are seeking out our school due to its small school climate, strong CTE and agricultural-based programs, and our successful athletic programs and traditions. Even with the additional students who will be generated from the Lakeside development, we will remain the smallest high school in the region. There are some important pieces of the timeline regarding negotiations of the supplemental mitigation agreement between our district and the Lakeside development of Sutter Point that I'd like to speak to. In September of two thousand nineteen, Lakeside and school officials began communications regarding development and the requirement of a supplemental mitigation agreement. In February of two thousand twenty-one, Lakeside submits a timeline to the district of tasks that need to be completed to execute a supplemental agreement. In January of two thousand twenty-two, the district prepares and approves a facility master plan. June of two thousand twenty-two, Lakeside cancels a planned meeting and requests the district to provide a draft supplemental agreement, which we do in August of two thousand twenty-two. From August two thousand twenty-two, after that agreement is, the draft is submitted, through February of two thousand twenty-three, the district follows up with Lakeside several times regarding the agreement with no response. In October of two thousand twenty-two, Lakeside claims our district breached contract and refuses to negotiate further on the agreement. In April two thousand twenty-four, negotiations finally get back, and we resume between George Carpenter from Lakeside, myself, our board president, Tom Engler, State Representative James Gallagher, and County Administrator Steve Smith, bringing us back to the table. In May and June of two thousand twenty-four, we meet with Lakeside regarding options of a reduction of student generation and a new revised capacity study that was done by King Consulting. In September, that capacity, just, just now, that capacity study has been completed and is being evaluated and considered by both parties. Currently, we look forward to returning to negotiations with Lakeside to reach an agreement in the near future that will provide the time necessary to prepare for the first students to arrive in the two thousand twenty-eight, twenty-nine school year. We request that the board does not approve the proposal today and provide our district more time to work towards the supplemental agreement to have time to prepare for these students. Thank you for the time and opportunity to speak on behalf of the East Nicholas Joint Union High School District. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Next speaker.
Thank you for the time. I agree with, with the county and, and George's comments that, you know, the development where it's at now certainly is a routine approval. Everything is great. The real, the real problem, obviously, for the school district is this mitigation agreement. On that point, I respectfully disagree with this idea that, hey, we have time, you know, we have building permits coming up. Tom talked about the amount of time it takes to, to get a school designed and built. The reality is, it's not up to the county what the, what the amount of time is, right? The county is not our big brother. The county, all we're asking the county to do is follow the mitigation agreement. The mitigation agreement very clearly says you will have a supplemental mitigation agreement before tentative maps. I mean, it's in the wording, it's in the agreement here. I don't know why we're arguing. Everything about, else about this development is great. I mean, who, who's, what's there to argue with? But we keep coming back over and over, and if the county would just enforce that, then the school district can take care of themselves, right? That's all we're asking, and it has not happened for the last, I've been on this board, I'm not on the board now, I was for a long time. George commented that, somebody at the county said, we want you to deal with our consultants. A friendly reminder that East Nicholas High School board members are not paid. No one on our school board or on the current school board is a developer. No one is a land use attorney. So what else are we going to do? Of course, we want them to talk to our attorneys and our consultants. Otherwise, we would be doing our district a disservice. I'm sorry that the district is standing their ground, it wants a reasonable outcome. All we're asking is the county to back us up by following the mitigation agreement. I come out here, I miss work, this is like the seventh agreement. Here we are, rehashing the same stuff over and over. Please, just follow the agreement, or else, you know, this whole thing is probably getting up in a courtroom.
Thank you, Dyson. Next speaker.
He still has me at recology. Yeah. Hi, Jackie Silman. I have my resident of Sutter County hat on and a community advocate for the past forty years, and I was at the table with Measure M. I was there twenty-plus years ago. I've gone to, I can't tell you how many meetings and just keeping an eye on, keeping an eye on this. I was honored to be a planning commissioner in two thousand twelve through sixteen, I think, appointed by Jim Whitaker, and I have been watching this. So I wanted to speak out today again with my resident. This is something that's been in the works for twenty years. This is just another step in the long process, I agree. The developers have continued to work to bring jobs, infrastructure to South Sutter County. They're constantly talking about it. They have not given up despite the adversity and the challenges, including the economic and, I can't even, numerous state and federal regulations, as we all know. This is a county's opportunity, finally, for some economic development. We've been talking about it, workforce development, economic development, Sutter County, let's grow, right? We've been talking about it for twenty-plus years. You are the visionaries that I think can make this happen. What I've watched, too, at Sutter Point has developed and allowed Sutter County to compete with the Metro Air Park in Roseville to bring employees. That's been very exciting to see. I've sat on a couple of those boards to here, so that's one other area. Sutter County needs to continue to show that it's business-friendly and open for development. It's very easy, I wrote down, to develop continues to happen in the surrounding counties like Placer and Sacramento. We have it, we see it. Why not Sutter County? And Sutter Point is an opportunity to generate sales tax and property tax. And I hear what the school is saying, but I also feel like the trust of the last twenty years, two thousand thirteen putting in that rego pass, they're, they're not going anywhere, they're not looking to hurt anybody in Sutter County. I think that, again, we voted for sixty percent for Measure M. I hope that you'll consider approving the tentative map. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Next speaker.
You hit the button right there. There you go.
There we go.
There.
Well, thank you, Chairman and Supervisors, for allowing me to speak. I am the Principal Superintendent at Pleasant Grove Joint Union School District. Just wanted to talk a little bit about my school. I do not have a presentation. I do have legal counsel here that will speak a little, a little more. If you're familiar with my school, you'll be driving down Housley Road. It's normally when you're being dragged to the Galleria, probably by your wife, or to Thunder Valley. It's a big cut across to Lincoln and Roseville. I saw that item number seven on the consent agenda referenced the bridge, so you have to drive over that crooked bridge to, to go past my school. So don't blink, because once you cross the tracks, there's a school, post office, and fire station, and that's it. That's a great little town, great little place. This is my thirty-fifth year in education. I've been there now eleven years, and it is one hundred percent the best job I've ever had and the best community I've worked in. There's a few orchards there, there's a few row crops, but it's mostly a rice community. The school began there in that, in that location in nineteen twenty-five, so next year, we're going to have an anniversary. We currently serve K through eighth grade, a hundred and sixty-five students. In my tenure there, we've been as high as two hundred and fourteen. That is max capacity at two fourteen, trust me. Sixty-five percent of our students are inter-district. They mostly come from Sacramento County, Rio Linda, Alberta, those areas. And they don't just come for a high-quality education or a small school size, which are two of the top reasons, but they are also a lot of alumni from the area, especially from East Nicholas High School. And unless you are a rice farmer, there's very little housing there. So we are taking a lot of kids with a lot of history with our school, and it has been our tradition to certainly welcome in our inter-district students. Prior to the pandemic, when the state was on this, the, the normal path for test scores, we, we have always had among the highest in the county, if not the highest test scores among our elementary school, we offer a high-quality education. For the past ten years, we've been working very collaboratively with the developers. We worked together to, to look at building a new school and making plans for that, including temporary housing at Pleasant Grove. And now, we are currently looking at expanding our school permanently, which we're not opposed to if we can work collaboratively and create some good opportunities for quality facilities for our school and for our community. I will say, in the past ten years, I've gained quite a few wrinkles and gray hair, and George Carpenter hasn't changed a bit. What the heck? The district has willingly worked to plan quality facilities with financial reason. We are not asking for anything unreasonable. The district currently has some significant constraints. The overall acreage availability, although we are over six acres, just a tad over six acres, only about four of those acres are usable for students. Our cafeteria and kitchen has significant limitations due to the size. We have no formal gym, no formal gym or really a formal multipurpose room. As PG grows and we change and we welcome Sutter Point, our goal is to maintain our K-8 school that's desirable and successful. We don't want to get too big, we don't want to stay too small, but we will continue to work collaboratively with the builders, but we are definitely, we want to maintain our history and we want to maintain the fact that it's such a great community school. We don't want to be a thousand-kid school on Housley Road. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Jim Whitaker.
Hey, Jim.
You're not going to see my title, huh? Right on. All right. Mr. Chairman, Board Supervisors, I come here today in support of Sutter Point Project. Sutter Point was voted on and passed on by the citizens of Sutter County in two thousand and five. Now, I'm not coming here to make any Board of Supervisors look bad. I really respect the work that you, all of you do serving Sutter County. My intention is, though, just trying to take you back in history, maybe acknowledge some of my mistakes as a Board of Supervisors and, and mistakes of past supervisors. So you see, at one point, Sutter County was asked if they wanted to be a part of the Uba County Water Agency, and Sutter County declined. All right? We were also be, asked to be a part of Metro Air Park, and again, Sutter County declined. Initially, before Sutter Point, Sutter County citizens voted on Newtown, and it was overwhelmingly defeated. And if that would have passed, this is what I've been told, is that we would have had the Galleria in Sutter County. Another, again, another loss for Sutter County. Most recently, some developers wanted to bring Costco to Sutter County, but the city of Uba City and Sutter County couldn't agree on, you know, taxation, and, once again, you know, Sutter County pointed their fingers at Uba, at the city of Uba City, Uba City pointed their fingers at Sutter County. You know, another loss for, for both of us, and Uba County, Uba County wins. So how many more times do we have to continue to get defeated before we get a win? Sutter Point is a win for our county. Sutter Point, upon total build-out, has the potential to boost our economy, all right? And I know, listening to the prior speakers and talking about education, and I've been in education for thirty years, I can honestly tell you, I'm pretty sure that there's professionals, professionals on both sides that can come to the, the mitigation agreements that are warranted in, in this case. I'm not going to, you know, say anything bad about East Nicholas High School. They're a reputable high school. I believe that, you know, the, the build-out when, on phase one, is going to be adult housing, and that means fifty-five and up. And so the only person that's producing it at fifty years and older is, is me, and I'm not sending my kids to East Nicholas High School. I just have to say that, you know, once again, support Sutter Point and support their, their ma, mapping agreement. It's a, it's a, it's a right move in looking for direction ahead. I will tell you, if you look at all of yourselves as being Sutter County, George Carpenter, he's Sutter County, I'm Sutter County, Jackie Silman's Sutter County, Barbara LeVega's Sutter County, and we're all here to support Sutter Point. Thank you, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Jim. Next speaker.
Lindsey Moore.
All right, through the chair. I have to get going. If you all want me to vote on this, I'm sorry, but I don't have a babysitter. All right? We're still family members, too. We're still family members, too, and I have to get going. I'm already 20 minutes late, but would you mind if I, if I say what I want to say, or is there any other speakers after you?
You'd have to be here for the vote. I mean, are you the last speaker?
Yeah. All right. All right. Is there more speakers after this?
No, I already have.
Right.
Can you make it quick?
Please.
Keep them away. Pinch out of trouble.
All right, I'll have to say, I've never been told I have to make it quick and not get the three minutes that I'm entitled to, but I will make it quick. So thank you very much. My name is Lindsey Moore, and I'm legal counsel for the Pleasant Grove Joint Union Elementary School District. And I want to make a, a statement because I spoke in opposition at the planning commission meeting. I will tell you that the position that Pleasant Grove is in now is different than it was originally because Condition 51A that was earlier referenced is something that we worked together with the developers to make sure that we protected the interests of the district. Because, as you heard from Superintendent Principal Tar, with a school that size, as small as they are, with 400, 500, 600, up to 850 students, it makes a significant impact. And that's why it was so important for Pleasant Grove to get those conditions of approval in place to make sure that we had adequate time to plan and prepare for those students that will come. I urge the board to make sure that those conditions of approval stay in place and that we aren't asked again to make further revision, because this is now the second time that we've had to come and agree to conditions of approval to modify the existing agreement that we have in place that East Nicholas went into great depth to address. So again, I urge the county with the approval of the conditions of approval to make sure that those stay in place and we aren't asked again to come back before you. While we are a separate school, we're the elementary school, our students feed into the high school, and the high school and the elementary school need to work together. We need our students to have a school to go to, so we have a vested interest in East Nicholas as well. So thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So I guess I got a question. It might be for you or maybe for George, that I was in attendance at the planning commission meeting where you spoke against this, and so my question is, how does the agreement with Pleasant Grove work as far as timing, the conditions of approval? How does 51A work and 51B doesn't work?
I, I can speak to the, to why 51A does work, and I'll, I'll tell you, because it's, it's based off of numbers that we have worked on in conjunction with the developers to make sure that, based upon the number of building permits that are issued, the number of students that are generated can be accommodated. So that's why there's different mile markers in those conditions based upon building permit numbers, because that does decipher the number of students that come our way.
So as far as the timing of the conditions of approval?
Okay, let me close the public hearing. George, did you have one last comment?
No, just to respond to the supervisor, it, we did put a trigger schedule together with all the various milestones of Pleasant Grove, and so what is in that Condition 51A reflects what, what we've worked on. We do not have something similar with East Nicholas.
Okay. Next, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion. Mike, you want to start?
I'm just going to say, we're talking about a year, two years. We're 20 years into this thing. 20 years. All right? First of all, we're not approving permits today. I made a lot of phone calls yesterday and today. All right? I, I respect the school districts. I respect the kids in those school districts and the kids that have been going to those schools for the last generations. And we're, I personally, and I know how my colleagues feel, we're not going to supplement another community in Sutter County. It's not going to happen. All right? We have costs, costs, fire department costs, sheriff's department costs, public works costs, all these costs. And when we generate all these costs together and we say, hey, this is what we need, and as far as I'm concerned, if they say no, then I'm not voting for that permit. That's it. All right? That's what it's all about when we get to there. This is another step right there. We're not, I'm, I'm not voting to approve any permits today, and I hope that developers are aware of that, I hope the school districts are aware of that, because I just sat down with our interim fire chief three Sundays ago saying, hey, Richard, what are your hard costs? He said, well, Mike, this is what I'm looking at, I'm putting those together. I'm like, seriously? We're just doing that now? What did we do? So what I'm getting at is, I know we're 20 years into this, but we got to figure this, all this stuff out before we get to that, here's your permit, start building. But I will be voting in favor of the maps, because I know that I'm not voting in favor of any permits and so forth, and we have to get there. But like I said, my fellow supervisor, Karen Baines, and I had a meeting with the developers a few weeks ago, and I feel we were in agreement in all the infrastructure and everything, the costs that add up. So, but we're not there yet. So I'm not voting for a permit today, I'm just voting for maps.
Okay. That concludes your call. Okay, Karen wanted to speak.
So I'm kind of toward, I've, I've, I've heard the challenges facing the school districts, and I appreciate the information from the school board chairman, Engler, and superintendent Stinson. Thank you, guys. I would ask staff, if you guys could please schedule a campus visit so I could learn more about the specifics and see the, the needs firsthand. I mean, and I'd be happy to do the same with, with Pleasant Grove Elementary School. But I would ask both developers and the school districts, I'd ask schools and developers to continue to work in good faith to reach an agreement, but I've decided to support this recommendation today. However, I want to make it clear that I was elected to serve and support Sutter County, and I expect the upcoming recommendations to include substantive improvements in infrastructure and services that benefit Sutter County residents, or I will not be supporting this in the future.
I make a motion to approve. Let's have everybody have a call. Dan?
Actually, the two supervisors prior to me, I'm of the same opinion, and they actually did a good job articulating. And in the essence of time for Mr. Supervisor Ziegemeyer here, I will agree with Supervisor Baines and Supervisor Ziegemeyer. I'd, I'd like to ask staff to also arrange the tour for me as well, but I also wanted to doubly encourage the developers to get back in the room ASAP with the high school, and let's resolve this. You know, there's an attorney that worked at the other school that worked it out, maybe, maybe there's something that can help there, I don't know, but maybe whatever happened there, let's make it happen there with you.
Sorry, yeah, sorry, Mike. I'll make it quick. I just wanted to, you know, remind everybody again, we've already heard about it tonight. It's been 20 years. We need to get this project going so we can generate tax revenue. I mean, the one thing that we always hear as supervisors is public safety or economic development. Because of the federal FEMA flood maps, there is no place else to really develop and create tax revenue other than down there at the Sutter Point. So I really hope that you guys can get together and work this out soon so we can get moving. And that's it. And I'll second the motion if it's not.
I've got just a few things to say, and I'll be real quick. This is a triangle. You know, a triangle? How do you get a triangle out of this? You have developers, the county, and the schools. And, you know, East Nicholas, dear to my heart, my father graduated from East Nicholas, I graduated from East Nicholas, both my sons graduated from Nicholas. I served on the school board, I was president of the school board for a while. And I, I agree with what you guys are saying, we got to get there. Developers, 20 years of work, and we're, and we're just not quite there yet. But we got, you guys have made a great, anyway, you're building certain lines, doing infrastructure improvements, ground moving dirt, getting ready to build. The county, we absolutely have to get economic development in Sutter County. The industrial air park to the south of us, right next to the development, Jenner has multiple distribution centers. It's my understanding that each distribution center of a million acre, square feet, not acres, million square feet, generates back to the county of Sacramento between sales tax and property tax, about $3 million at best. If we could four or five of those in Sutter County, we may, our county budget may look a hell of a lot better. And so, that's my comments. We now have a motion?
In a second.
In a second? We already have it?
That's for roll call.
Do you want to roll a roll call on this one?
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
An ordinance of the county of Sutter, amending the zoning of certain parcels in the county.
Boy, the room clears out. Okay, we're going to have a real quick restroom break. Fellow supervisors are requesting it. Those old guys, don't they? Coming back into session from restroom break, let's see, we are on number 24, Molly Bloom.
All right. Good afternoon, Honorable Chair and Board of Supervisors, Molly Bloom, Director and Curator at the Sutter County Museum. Thank you all so much for having me today. So we are halfway through a three-year project to update some of our local history exhibits at the Sutter County Museum, so it's a great time for a progress report to let you all know a little bit more what we've been working on and where we're at and what's to come. So just to start with, today, I'm going to go over just a brief project overview, just as a reminder of the project, and for some folks in the audience for whom it may be new. And then, we'll go into some of the learning and experience goals for the project, an overview of the content that will be in these exhibits, and then get into some of the floor plan, the gallery visualizations, and opportunities for visitor engagement, before moving to some of our partnerships, and then to let you all know about some of the next steps in the project. So the overview, in 2023, the museum was awarded over $383,000 in funding from the California Museum Grant Program. And so this project was to renovate and redesign the museum's middle galleries, and we call them the middle galleries because they are in the middle of the museum, between the main exhibit gallery that people enter into and the agricultural wing. And so in those galleries, the plan is to update the content on the Nisanon, our first people's exhibit, and then also the information in the museum on the Gold Rush and Westward Expansion, and then adding a new exhibit for local flood history. And then later phases of this project will include producing artifact trunks related to these exhibits and the accompanying curriculum that will support teachers and students off-site in classrooms, as well as to develop educational programs in the museum, field trips, and gallery activities that will align with state standards for curriculum as well as our renovated exhibits. So the overview of these exhibits is that we will use these galleries to function as an exploration of Uba-Sutter history through the lens of three key concepts, which I just talked about. And then, you know, the goal for this is to have an experience that's deeply informed by the personal experiences of community members in, both past and present, in Uba-Sutter. And so this gallery will carefully consider how Uba-Sutter has evolved based on the changing relationship between people and the land they call home. So although these topics of history may seem diverse in some ways, the through line is really about the relationship between the people of Uba and Sutter Counties and the landscape. And so we'll be looking at those through lenses of resilience, stewardship, recovery, and reciprocity of humans living with the landscape. And so we're, we're working with Ralph Applebaum Associates, they are world-renowned exhibit designers, and then Gizmo, they are art fabricators with a great reputation in the museum field for creating all kinds of custom exhibits for adults, for kids. for creating all kinds of custom exhibits for adults, for kids, and doing all kinds of cool and artistic things. And they are a Bay Area-based company, so that also saves us a little on cost for fabrication and shipping. So some of our learning goals for this exhibit would be to create a sense of excitement, trust, insight, inspiration, and curiosity around local history, for visitors to leave with a clear understanding of how these three key topics have determined the evolution and future of Yuba and Sutter Counties, to underscore how all community members are connected to and contribute to our local areas, past, present, and future, and then to encourage further exploration in the study of Yuba-Sutter floods, the Gold Rush, and tribal communities with ties to the region. And then in terms of our experience goals for the exhibit, the types of experience that we want visitors to have when they come to the galleries, we want to allow for individualized and group learning moments that will reinforce how all visitors contribute to Sutter County's history, to provide a variety of different experiences that reinforce those roles of stewardship, resilience, reciprocity, and recovery, when it comes to the people of Yuba-Sutter and their relationship with the land and landscape. And then we also really want to make sure to offer learning opportunities and interactive components in the galleries that resonate with different age levels and learning styles, so that there is something for everyone, and there are many ways for people to learn, explore, and engage. And so, in terms of the content, just some of the high-level overview of these key topics, they'll include the First Peoples' past lifeways, and then a changing life way as we move through time, leading up to First Peoples of the present. We'll also be looking at the westward expansion and the Gold Rush. So, you know, we know a lot of people came to the Gold Rush, but also then looking at mining and some of the early impacts on the landscape and society, but also some of those other reasons that people arrived in the area, whether it's fur trapping and other pioneers that continued to come across the plains. And then, we'll be moving to also look at historic floods. And then, there's also a lens of risk and resilience, you know, how can we prepare for the future? So not just how we see our ancestors and the people of the past in the exhibit, but what we can do at the present to address risk and resilience and better prepare for a healthier future in Sutter County, and safer. And so then, you know, I wanted to start by saying, as I move into some of the concept drawings, this is the concept, so the design plan is presented to us as a concept, which doesn't mean that things are set in stone, but it gives us an idea of what we might be able to see in a finalized version of the exhibit. And so, this is the floor plan of the middle galleries, and you can see those three topic areas throughout the galleries, as well as a central activity, which would be some sort of map with Yuba and Sutter Counties, that would give visitors the opportunity to explore, you know, things a little deeper. And then you'll also see the, that kind of wavy line on the floor, and so the goal would be to also include a, like a representation of the Yuba River watershed, so something, you know, for our youngest visitors to explore, even if you're too short to reach some of the fun components that will be lining the gallery walls, there's something to look at. But it's also a really great teaching tool that can help orient people to Sutter County, and there are a few ways, you know, they're proposing this could happen. And so then, we get into some of the actual elevations of the concept design, and again, you know, all of these pictures might be swapped, moved, but the idea would be to have panels in the gallery, and then what's called a rail at the front that will have tabletop activities, perhaps objects, and then content in the front, and you'll see that a little better when we get to some of the visualizations. But right now, we're looking at the wall that would have the First Peoples', the Nisanan exhibit there. And then, this would be looking toward the agricultural wing of the museum, so thinking about the westward expansion, and having this, the idea is that this will be a door that will block one of the two doorways, they're very large, but it will actually be able to rotate in the current plans we're looking at, so that there can still be, it can be opened, it can be a pass-through, and this will be an interactive wall that we'll get into a little bit later, of what kinds of educational opportunities people will have with that. And then you can see also, we have that opposing wall to the far side of it, and so the idea is that on the back of that flip panel in the ag wing, you know, there'd be some sort of image. And these are images from the Sutter County Museum collection that are examples of the types of images that may be used. Then we're looking toward the flood exhibit, and you can see that it really mirrors the First Peoples to kind of have a cohesive room that will, you know, not feel out of place if you're on one side on the other, but they're using subtle things like color to show that you're in a different zone, learning about a different topic, but some of the cohesiveness, you know, they really responded to things that relate to Yuba-Sutter. So specifically, like these wooden panels on the wall are, you know, white oak to, as a call to the valley oak of the region, and some of the colors are related to things like, you know, the way humans interact with the landscape, but also how we change things. So it's accented with things like copper and corte and steel to call to some of the ways that water and humans impact material. So even within the materiality of the exhibit, the designers were really thinking about helping locate this here in, you know, Sutter County. And then this is looking back toward the main gallery, so, you know, we have these three entryways, so we're a little more limited in what we can do facing this direction, but the idea would be to have a, let's see, wow, I'm really bad at this. There's a, over here, it might not be flat on the wall, but some sort of feedback activity as well, so that when people are heading out, there might be prompts or things that they could use to help carry something forward from their experience. So we've really tried to think of many ways to engage people, and we'll get into that a little more in a moment. And so then, I think this is like the big exciting part, so you know, we can see the floor plan, we can see the elevations, but then when we get into the actual gallery visualizations, I think we get a sense of what we're really looking at. And so this is, you know, the visualization of what it might look like facing toward the flood section of the exhibit. And so I want to point to a couple of things, you can see that big central map, you know, the goal would be to eventually have that have several points of engagement, you know, maybe it's something where you press a button, and then it can project, you know, it can play a loop that, you know, shows where historic floods were in different parts of the county, or the landscape over time. I have checked with the exhibit designers to make sure this technology exists and is possible, but there are lots of options, and so I think our goal right now is really just to keep the maximum flexibility in the gallery for the types of things that we could do in this first phase, as well as add in the future. And then, this is looking back toward that westward expansion wall and towards the First Peoples exhibit, it gives you a little bit of an idea of the floor, so they've talked about ideas like engraving into the floor and/or painting, but you can also see that westward expansion wall, so the idea for that is to have it be a photo mural with one photo, but then some of those smaller flaps that are broken up would be flip panels, so there would be lots of opportunities to engage in the various ways. And I really loved this idea because it kind of calls to that, like, exploration, you know, that we see with the westward expansion and that period of the Gold Rush. So, when people open up those flaps, it might be an object behind plexiglass, or it might be a prompt to ask them to think a little deeper, or something that inspires closer looking. So there are a lot of options for what we can do as we move further into the project phase. And then lastly, I wanted to show this image, I think it really shows the idea of that rail that I was talking about, where there would be tabletop interactives, and then some of the text panels that could give people, you know, that will be the content to give people some information. And so some of the ideas for interactives that are being discussed, we'll see if I do better this time, one is the, you know, this could be like touchable natural resources, so a station that works well for even our youngest visitors. The idea would be to have a weaving station, I'll show you an example of one, you know, that this crew has designed in the past, but something where people could, you know, mimic weaving a basket, and there would be a structure of a basket that calls to this area there. Another option they're proposing would be some sort of, like, puzzle layered activity, and then things like flip books. So, these are very clever ways to add in additional content, you know, this gallery, I should point out, is only 748 square feet, you can see we have lofty goals for it, and what we would like to fit in terms of the topics we want to cover. So, we're really hoping to use these interactives as ways to layer in that additional content and help us make up for some of the lack in space by using creative solutions to add more in there. And so, I talked a little bit about some of those proposed points of engagement, so some of the options, I talked about the natural resources, basketry, weaving, but there's a better picture here of that, where you can see an example of what something like that might look like with a basket from another region of the country. And then also thinking about things like, for the flood exhibit, things like a slide viewer, we have so many wonderful photos in our collection of local floods, as well as... And then, we have like options for things like a flip book or a family scrapbook that would look like kind of a family heirloom, but could have, you know, articles, newspaper clippings, photographs, and so another way to layer in the content, because that's an area that we know is so, has so many people who are very passionate about that topic in the community, and we have a lot of content related to that that we love to include as well. And then, of course, we have lots of audio and video recordings from local floods, so we would love to have a listening and video station as well, for people to view some of those, that video footage and news coverage. And then, we'd also like to have, you know, this disaster resilient slide panel, perhaps related to local emergency scenarios, and some of the ways that people can respond. So again, bringing back in that, like, risk and resilience, to keep us seeing ourselves in the exhibit and learning what we can do moving forward. And then lastly, that feedback and reflection station I mentioned earlier. So I think, you'll probably agree, this is cramming a lot into a really small space, but we're excited about all the things that will be possible to bring to the community in these exhibits. And so I did just want to talk a little bit about, you know, some of our partnerships in this and the budget. So, in total, this build that we're looking at is a $300,000 budget, and I should mention, there's no vote asked for or anything like that today, this has already been approved. So, about $225,000 comes from that Natural Resources Agency grant, and then the Sutter County Museum Association, which is a nonprofit that specifically supports the museum, has already promised to put $45,000 toward this exhibit, and that's money that comes from fundraisers like Trees and Traditions, from sales in the museum gift shop, memberships, and donations to the museum. So, they're continuing to fundraise as well. Also, in previous years, Subufka and United Auburn Indian Community of the Auburn Rancheria diverted funding for the future, the previous version of the Nisanan exhibit, and about 15,000 is already, is left that can be used for this project, that's maintained by the museum association, and then the City of Yuba City has also committed 15,000 toward this project. So, this gets us to everything I talked about, other than the central map, interactive, and then the proposals for the floor. And so, like I said, the museum association is continuing to, you know, fundraise with the goal of being able to support those later phases of the project, but, you know, I'm still really excited that we're going to be able to get so much done in this first phase, that some of these elements might be possible later. And I also just wanted to take a moment to thank some of our project team volunteers. As you know, the museum staff is small to start with, but, so we're fortunate to have a very dedicated team of volunteers that have been committing their own time to this project, and that includes several Sutter County employees, so Chuck Smith, James Oxner, and Zach Hamel in particular, have been committing a lot of time based on their expertise for serving the community and with the content that we're looking at for this exhibit, as well as Cheryl Simmons, our retired assistant museum curator, who has a lot of knowledge on local history, David Ruby Alice, who's a retired professor from Yuba College, and has expertise in local history as well, and has written several books on the topic, and then Phyllis Smith, our museum association president, and many, many others who have been committing their time, ideas, and stories for this project for years. So I just wanted to take a moment to thank them as well. And then in terms of next steps, you know, the work will continue, so this Thursday on September 26th, we're holding a community forum from 5:00 to 7:00 PM in Edel Hall behind the museum. So this will be an opportunity, I'll be doing a similar presentation to this, but also a chance for the community to share some of their feedback, insight, and ideas for the project before we get further along in the process. And then after that, we'll be moving into the developing of the content, and eventually finalizing plans, so that the exhibit fabricators can move to building the exhibits and eventually installing it. And then when it comes to the grand opening, you know, we're on track to have this done by early next year, in time for the museum's 50th anniversary, which is in April, so that will be the 50th of the museum, so we should have something new to show everyone, you know, after 50 years of this, as well as all the things we've been doing along the way. And then after that, we'll really be focusing on the next phase of the project, of the developing of the school and field trip program, that will align well with this exhibit, and then continue to serve students across the counties. And as you mentioned, we served about 700 students through our field trip and group programs last year, so we're hoping that this, these opportunities will only grow the people we can serve in the county. And so I'll close that just by thanking you all again for your support in pursuing this grant opportunity that could allow us to make these exciting upgrades for the museum, and thank you for giving me your time today.
Thank you, Molly. Any speaker cards? No. Okay, comment from the board?
Sure, I'm just like, wow, yeah. I mean, I just want to tell you, you did a fantastic job, you got me pretty stoked to hear about what's going on at the museum, great job. I'm really excited for the future, what you're showing us. I love the way you took the bull by the horns here, and you really created something and utilizing a lower budget even, to create a vision for us to look at and be able to support for the future, and just, it's really exciting to me. I did have a couple of quick questions, just on the central map and the flooring, like, what kind of dollars are you looking at?
Yeah, that's a good question. I would say the museum association would be looking to raise about 150 to 250 to complete the project, with the full concept design we're looking at. Again, there are ways to be creative and get something in the interim, perhaps, that's less, but that's what we'd be seeking for the next phases of the project.
Great, thank you, very exciting, appreciate your presentation, Molly.
Thank you.
I just want to say, great presentation, Molly, it was truly amazing, and I look forward to seeing this come to fruition.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you, it's gonna look great. Quick question, the company that you said, I forget the name, that does the exhibit designs?
Yeah, Gizmo is our fabricator that's out of the Bay Area, but we also worked with Ralph Applebaum Associates, and they're the designers of the exhibit.
Do they happen to ever do any, like, live hydraulic, like, exhibits?
I think they could, we were, we actually discussed options for the map, I think our building and the location of this might make it hard based on where the water is, but I believe that would be something they could do, so you know...
You could have like a tank with a sump pump underneath, and shoot, I don't know, I'm just, if I was a kid, I'd think that would be pretty cool.
No, it's funny you say that, because one of, and there is technology, one of the things we've looked at is there is technology that can mimic water, like, they're called like sand tables, if you Google that, it'll probably come up, but you put your hand over and it makes it rain basically where your hand is, and then it would show where the water could flow. But I think our idea, you know, the map is a little different, but I think for us, we really want to make sure to show the topography of Sutter County, because I think that's so relevant to the changes in the landscape. But one of, like, one of the things we talked about for leaving opportunities for the future is even if we're able to build a map that might not have all the features we're looking for, they said they can build underneath so that there's storage or space if we wanted to add something, so maybe it could be in the future.
All right.
Love it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Molly, great presentation. Now, this is both Yuba and Sutter County for the flow of water, correct?
Yeah, I think for us, you know, when we talk about, I mean, we are the Sutter County Museum, of course, but I think, you know, the histories from this time period that we're looking at are so intertwined, that it really makes sense to kind of share the full story. And we actually had a lot of discussions, the project team and the exhibit designers, in terms of what was possible about what that central map would look like, would it make sense just to do a portion of the county, would it make sense just to do Sutter County? But I think in the end, we're really hoping to do a Yuba-Sutter map, because I think seeing the way the water flows throughout the whole region will really help highlight some of these components that we're hoping to get across to students, just because that's a part of, like, where we're at today, is how the water flows and how the landscape has changed over time, from humans, from other interventions of the natural persuasion. And so I think, yeah, so ultimately, we ended up going that direction.
So Dan actually brought this up when we were, a minute ago, when we were sitting here, listening to your presentation, but, you know, if you get their watershed in it, Yuba County Water Agency is very involved in educating people about, maybe they would contribute for your map and your project.
Oh yeah, thank you, that's a great suggestion. I know our nonprofit did have a meeting, and so hopefully, it's the beginning of conversations for what might be options for the future, but one thing that was really great from that meeting is they've offered their educational content and re... that meeting is they've offered their educational content and resources, they have a great archive of photos, video components as well, and so we're really excited that the community is really backing this project and excited about what might be possible and willing to contribute their stories and ideas and resources as well.
Hey, with all their money, we could build like real waterfalls in there and stuff. Yeah.
Exactly. Thank you, Molly.
To the chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to acknowledge Ms. Bloom, she's done an amazing job with the museum, largely responsible for getting this grant, and like Chuck Smith mentioned earlier about hardworking local government employees, people wouldn't know that she's there 12 hours a day, multiple days. Of course, there's a lot of events that happen at night. Her husband ends up helping her and volunteering and doing all kinds of things, other folks do, and, and I just wanted to acknowledge her work ethic and everything that she does and her passion for this is just the utmost. Also, that both internally, we're trying to find additional funding for the museum for, you know, to make future years better, because this has been a very tough year. And then also, I think there are opportunities there, whether it's the Water Agency or, or other, whether it's government agencies or even, you know, local businesses that, that we can look at getting more involved in the museum, because it's so great and this is just going to improve it that much more. And I'd be happy to get together with a couple supervisors and speak with a couple over on the Yuba County side about, about options.
I think she can handle it. But we can introduce her to the, because your, your passion does show as, as, as Steve mentioned, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, no motion is required for this, so we'll move on. Thank you, does there's any other question for Molly? Nope. Okay, so item number 25, Sarah?
Adoption of a resolution authorizing a collaborative needs assessment of the By County Mental Health Plan, regional structure administered via Joint Powers Authority known as Sutter-Yuba Behavioral Health, and authorization to create an affiliated By County Mental Health Plan Assessment Ad Hoc Committee and appoint two supervisors to serve on the committee.
To the chair, I just wanted to mention briefly, as some background to this before, I think Rick is gonna, Mr. Bingham's gonna give the majority of the presentation, but back in January, the Yuba County Board approved an agreement with a consultant to look at conducting a needs assessment for the By County Mental Health Plan and kind of specifically to look at, you know, I think they're curious to make sure that the Yuba County folks are getting adequate treatment, and it's been a collaborative approach, and Supervisor Baines and I went to that January meeting and spoke, and, and that's what we stressed, is that we were looking for a collaborative type of environment for this, because their consultant or team, if they have more than one, they needed access to our facilities and our people, because Sutter County folks are the ones providing the services. So I'll, I'll leave it at that, that, that was a good meeting, and just wanted to give that background, thank you.
Thank you, CIO Smith and honorable members of the board. So since 1969, Sutter County has had an agreement with Yuba County to administer behavioral health services, and our current JPA goes back to 1972, and since that time, you can imagine we've seen some considerable changes in our communities. For example, our population has more than doubled. In 1970, the combined population of both counties was about 87,000 people. In 2023, that was estimated to be 184,000 people. And at the same time as this population growth, we've seen increases in the need for mental health and substance use services that have outpaced the growth of the communities. Add to this that in the last three years, there have been seismic shifts in behavioral health policy coming from the state, probably more changes than have occurred since 1969 when we started this agreement with Yuba County. We've also seen an increased demand for behavioral health staff and anticipate that this will continue as a result of staffing shortages across the state and the nation in behavioral health staffing. And of course, our staff are our greatest resource. So this assessment is, is well timed due to these changes in policy, resources, and population, and of course, our highest priority as we perform this assessment are the clients that we serve and in ensuring that we continue to provide very high quality services to your constituents. So Yuba and Sutter Counties will work together to analyze available data and existing behavioral health programs and systems to provide recommendations regarding behavioral health services, and behavioral health anticipates working through the ad hoc committee and will periodically bring findings before the behavioral health advisory board, your Board of Supervisors, as well as behavioral health staff, clients, and community members. And we are looking as well to have two board members appointed to the ad hoc committee in Yuba County. Supervisors Fuhrer and Vasquez have been appointed to that committee. And that concludes my presentation.
I guess, when does the first meeting start? You might have mentioned that.
We don't have the meeting scheduled yet, we're still forming the, just, Yuba County took their resolution two weeks ago to their board, and so we anticipate that they'll start here in the next few weeks.
Your microphone, sir.
The two supervisors don't need to be appointed right now, right?
I think the ask is that, yeah, if, if possible, if two can be appointed, I see Supervisor Ziegemeyer is asking to be on it.
He is?
I'm kidding, he, he didn't, I just.
He's not here, but that's all right. We'll saddle him.
I was definitely gonna nominate Supervisor Ziegemeyer. Anyone want a second on that?
I do.
Okay, so Supervisor Ziegemeyer, did you want to vote?
And you can do it too?
No, I can't. I have, I was, I wouldn't be able to accept for that, because I have so many other responsibilities.
Tom can do it.
We can, you know what you can do? One of the Jeffs.
Yeah.
One of the Jeffs.
That would be, that would be nominate someone coming in next year.
Yeah.
Yeah, when are the next meetings?
He didn't know, he didn't. Okay, I nominate Supervisor Baines.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
And a second for Ziegemeyer and Baines?
Yes.
Okay, and that will make that part of the motion, correct?
Yes.
And you move to approve the recommended action?
Correct.
And we have a second also?
Yes.
Okay. Build this through, a voice call, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Most passing unanimously. Okay. What's that?
Receive an update on the hiring freeze for all county departments.
Good evening, Supervisors, Taylor Caota, Deputy County Administrator. We've been four months into our hard hiring freeze that the board adopted back in May, and the Administrator's Office would just like to provide you and the community with a brief update about how that's been working so far, as well as kind of clarify a little further about what it is, because we've received some comments in the community about is Sutter County still hiring. So first, I would like to say that yes, Sutter County is still hiring. The hiring freeze serves as a way for us to control our budget and be intentional with our hiring, but it does not mean we're not hiring. It means mostly that when we do hire, we take a look at the budget, and typically in the past, without a hiring freeze, departments essentially, if they have budget authority, will proceed with positions if they need to fill them. Really now, what we're doing is with this freeze is just adding the extra step of working with the County Administrator's Office, and so departments will work with their CIO liaisons as well as County Administrator Steve Smith before that goes through. But with that said, the hiring freeze, while it has helped us with our budget, as we said it would, it also has not prevented us from hiring where we need to. So for an example, we have a lot of HHS positions that come through. In fact, most of the positions that we have had department requests, 77 of the, I'm sorry, I have the total, of the 111 that have come through since the hiring freeze was implemented, the HHS ones have all gone through. And basically, everyone that comes through by working with the County Administrator's Office, the departments are able to understand what they are and they do move through. So when positions do move through, they still hire relatively quickly. It's about a two pay period delay from when departments ask for the position to when it moves through the process to when it gets hired. So the hiring freeze is going to continue. We anticipate at least through the end of the budget year, because the conditions are what they were back when we asked the board to approve the recommended budget, but we just wanted everyone to know that where there is a need for a county to have staff, we're continuing to hire that. Again, we just do it intentionally. And then just by way of kind of a larger context, before I wrap up here, there are just, just under 1,100 positions total allocated for, for the county, and of those, we have 173 open. So that's about a 16% vacancy rate, just under 16%. As we've said here many times, we're a very lean operation and we have incredibly hardworking staff like Molly Bloom, for example, but we are continuing to meet the needs of county residents, and we continue to look at the budget carefully to make sure that we are putting the county's dollars where they best serve the citizens of Sutter County. If you have any questions, I can answer, or Steve can. Thank you.
Any questions? Any speaker cards? Nope, no speaker cards, no questions, no actions taken. Moving on, Steve Smith.
Adoption of a resolution authorizing a revenue sharing agreement with the City of Yuba City.
So this item, a revenue sharing agreement with Yuba City is something that has been a, a work in progress for, well, i- if you count time before ad hoc committees, you know, a year or more, and I just wanted to go over some of the highlights and answer any questions you or the public may have about it. So as you may remember, in 2022, the county ran Measure A, which was a countywide 1% sales tax measure. It would have generated somewhere between, well, in the 19 to 20 million dollar range, and most of that revenue is of course generated by the businesses in Yuba City. That narrowly failed by about 400 votes, it was maybe 48 and a half, 51 and a half, something, does that add up? Something, something like that, yeah. And, but, the City of Yuba City put together a revenue ad hoc in December of that year to look at ongoing revenue issues as most local governments since COVID and many even before have been struggling with having adequate revenues, whether it's for public safety, roads, or other functions. Sutter County, we put together a revenue ad hoc committee in March of 2023. It was Supervisors Baines and McKelly, and met several times, I think about three, three or so times between March and the joint meeting that was held, the joint city-county meeting that was held here in December 2023. So one of the final meetings in November leading up to that joint meeting, there was some agreement there that it, it looked like it may be best for Yuba City, they hadn't made a final determination yet, but to, if they were going to move forward with a 1% general sales tax measure that is within the city limits, so it's different than Measure A, and what's on the ballot now is Measure D, and it would be a 1% general sales tax within the Yuba City limits. However, Yuba City also has been a great partner and recognizes the difficult situation the county is in, and we had had some tentative discussions during Measure A about sharing revenue with both cities, though nothing official like this recommended agreement. However, the recommendation here is that revenue would be shared 67% with Yuba City and 33% with Sutter County, and I'll get a little more into the details in a moment with that, that we would establish a joint projects fund that would take some of the money, and it would require that both the city council and the Board of Supervisors approval before moving forward with projects. And also, it does not cover, just to be specific, it does not cover any of the unincorporated areas or the City of Live Oak. And I should have acknowledged too, and I thank Councilmember Mark Boomgarden for being here, who was a big part of that, and my colleague at the city, City Manager Diana Langley, thank you for, for both being here. So Yuba City has addressed priorities over the years for some general needs. We know well, that's been in the media lately, roads, specifically, there's a, a great need for road repair, both frankly, probably in most jurisdictions, but throughout the city and unincorporated areas, but Yuba City for their, their roads within the city limits, both police and fire, and of course homelessness, just in general, and to, of course, help business and economic development. They also recognize that the county needs support in some similar measures for homelessness response. Also, our jail is incredibly expensive to run, and we need District Attorney prosecutors adequately staffed, which has been a real challenge for many rural counties throughout the state. As discussed at the Rural Counties Conference just last week, Supervisor Conan was there, that's an item that came up, or Chair Conan, I should say. And other general services that would benefit Yuba City residents. And as we know, if you're a resident of Yuba City, you're a resident of Sutter County, so there's crossover in the constituencies there. Some of the key terms that are outlined in the agreement is that if Measure D passes, that revenue would not actually be shared. What would be shared is the city's Bradley Burn sales tax. So you may be familiar, counties and cities get 1% of the, of the 725, one of that is, is local, the rest mainly goes to the state, some of it comes back to the county in various ways, like public safety, specific funding, or some realignment, health and human services related funding, but as far as general fund, we each get 1%, whether it's in the incorporated area for Yuba City, or in the unincorporated area would be for Sutter County. So that amount, they already receive, an equal amount of that, 33% would be shared. So again, to be specific, the, the Measure D revenue will not be shared, but an equal amount of 33% of that generated from a 1% sales tax would be shared with Sutter County. Again, the sharing is dependent upon the passage of Measure D. The funds are to be expended within the Yuba City sphere of influence. It shall not be used for rural or county fire department services. There is some information in there that outside of the sphere, if there is something that we can jointly work on or get approval from, because we may have a need, say, let's, let's up on the, the buttes, we need to put some infrastructure in, and it's going to be a million dollars if we wanted to use, if this all came to be, some of that money, we would just work with the city and say, hey, we'd like to use some of this, and it's going to benefit the region, and hopefully they'd be amenable to that. But, and I'm sure we, we've been working well together for many, many years, so. That we spend it within 60 months, that seems a reasonable timeframe in that as we get funds, we may want to put some aside for some facilities, but also so that we don't sit there on just a pot of money for 20 years and haven't done anything with it. I mean, they would also like to see results that benefit the community from this potential revenue. So they've asked in it that we prioritize public safety, homeless services, roads within the sphere, and other services that benefit Yuba City residents. Most county services do benefit Yuba City residents. There would be a joint projects fund requiring both the approval of the city council and the Board of Supervisors before moving forward with the project, and I will get again to that in just a moment. I also wanted to mention the government codes that allow this type of agreement to be entered into between jurisdictions, so you can see their government code sections 55, 700, to 55- So, you can see their government code sections 55-700 to 55-707. Section 29 of Article 13 of the California Constitution authorizes counties and cities to enter into agreements to apportion between them the revenue derived from sales or use taxes imposed by them pursuant to the Bradley Burns Uniform Local Sales and Use Tax, and that's that local 1%. So, again, revenue from Measure D will not be shared, but an equivalent amount would be shared from the city's Bradley Burns. Oh, I just spelled that wrong. I guess I shouldn't have pointed that out. Gina spelled that wrong in my report, in the Bradley Burns sales tax. So, here's an example of how this would work. In the agreement, there's a base year that we're estimating the 1% will generate $17.5 million. Of that 67%, or about 11.7 million, would go to Yuba City and about 5.8 million would go to Sutter County. Any amount received over the base year is split 50% to Yuba City and 50% to the joint projects fund. So, and then that amount becomes the base for the following year. So, if Measure D goes through and if it's approved, and next year, the timing is a bit complicated, but in that first year, if really 18.5 million comes in instead, 18.5 million will be the new base for the following tax year that we would split 6733. And that million above the 17.5 for that year would be split 5050 to Yuba City and, and into the joint projects fund. So, if an amount lower came in, then it would be a 6733 split. And there are provisions in the agreement that if there's money sitting in the joint projects fund and sales tax comes in lower, it can be used to fill up that base. So, say there's $1 million sitting in there and the sales tax revenue comes in short that year, the city and county could agree to use that each to kind of fill up that, that deficit instead of using it for a project if desired. This agreement was unanimously approved by the Yuba City Council on September 3rd, and the recommendation is to adopt a resolution of the Board of Supervisors for the County of Sutter, authorizing the chairman to execute a revenue sharing agreement with the City of Yuba City. It's my final slide. Happy to answer any questions.
Do, any, let's see if we have any speaker cards first. Nope. Okay. Does the board have any questions?
Through the chair. I just have comments. I just wanted to thank Steve and Diana and then both Mark and Sean from Yuba City. When we were working with them, they recognized right away that obviously we, we have some needs with the jail, which made it a little bit easier to, to get going on the negotiations. And so, really appreciated all your hard work, Diana and Steve especially, for working this out. And let's hope it passes. It's something that we really need. We know that operating the jail is extremely expensive and grows every year. So, I hope that the voters of Sutter County, Yuba City, realize that. So, anyways, thank you guys for your work. Appreciate it.
Carm?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I got beat up by my colleagues saying that I didn't do a good job negotiating, so I don't know if I have anything to say up here. But, but no, thanks to Councilmember Boomgarden and Mayor Harris, Diana Langley. It was, you know, I think that with everybody coming together and seeing the needs, or actually, the, you know, for us to be able to continue to provide the services that we do in Sutter County, that this was essential for, for Sutter County to, to be a part of this and that those funds will be well spent. And so, I don't know. I mean, I support the measure and I'll just pass it on to Supervisor Floris to make a few comments.
Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to start by thanking Supervisor McKellen and Supervisor Baines for working on the, on the committee, the negotiations committee with the, with the city. And of course, thanking Mr. Boomgarden there and, and Mr. Harris for working on the committee as well. And I look forward to supporting the measure.
Thank you. I'll just ditto everything everybody had already said. And I guess there's no questions? No more questions? Did, oh, Mark, did you want to? Yes.
Sorry, I didn't follow protocol.
No speaker card?
Put a speaker card in there. So, it's a foul on me. First, just wanted to say that, you know, these, the opportunity to come together and work with the city and the county is something that was very important to me and to others, especially those of us who are on the ad hoc committee. Carm, you did a fantastic job in negotiations. I think it was tough negotiations, but, and to Nick as well, and to Steve and to Diana and to the councils that put together the agreement. I think it's important to recognize their efforts as well. This is a kind of a unique agreement. I'm not familiar with any such agreement between a county and a city. So, we are feeling pretty good about the opportunity that this will present to both the city and the county and, and to all of the Board of Supervisors. I just want to know, I want to extend to, to all of you, I wish Mike was here as well. You know, my, my, my feeling of gratitude for what I hope is a very positive vote here shortly, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Any other questions? Diana, did you want to say anything? Go ahead.
I just want to say, this has been a long road, but through that, I feel like there have been some really positive relationships forged and I appreciate the professionalism and I also appreciate just the process because I think through it that we've been able to really address some key issues and so thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
The chair?
Yes.
I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? What is the voice? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Okay, moving on. Laura, would you like to?
Ratify a five-year agreement with Sherpa Government Solutions for Budget Software and Implementation and Support for the period of September 12th, 2024 through June 30th, 2029, in an amount not to exceed $1,375,524. An approval of an amendment to the fiscal year 2024-25 recommended budget, increasing appropriations by $347,219, offset by a reduction in fund balance committed for capital projects.
Cam?
Still the afternoon, right? So, good afternoon, Honorable Chair.
Evening.
Board of Supervisors, Ken Strah, General Services Director. So, Gina basically stated the entire thing, but, you know, the, the recommendation is to the board is to take the following action. So, number one, ratify the CAO's approval and the General Services Director's signature on the agreement with Sherpa Government Solutions for Budget Software Implementation and Support. It's a five-year contract with a cost not to exceed $1.375,524 million. The term is September 12th, 2024 through June 30th, 2029. And also, the second action is to approve an amendment to the fiscal year 24-25 adopted budget, increasing our Workday project budget in the Capital Projects Fund by $347,219. And that is offset by a reduction in our obligated fund balance in the general fund committed for capital projects. So, a lot of words there. Just to give you a quick background, I'll be brief. July 26, 2022, the board approved a 15-year agreement for us to migrate to the Workday software platform. As you know, Workday replaced the existing One Solution system that was basically obsolete, unsupportable, and was at risk of failure. So, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't thank the board for allowing us to go ahead and move to Workday. They allowed us to be proactive, make a change without being in a different situation where a system would fail, we'd have a catastrophic failure, and the change would be forced upon us and we wouldn't really have a good backup plan. So, the board should be recognized for that. Workday project activity started shortly after you approved the contract in 2022. We had pre-planning activities for the first few months and then the project actually kicked off February of 2023 and we went live ju, April of 2024, so 14 months. And just to put it in perspective, a 14-month ERP implementation from, going from nothing to go live is really impressive. So, the project team that was involved, from the CAO's office, the Auditor Controller's office, Treasury Tax Collector, HR, IT, or General Services Procurement Team, and then all of our department partners, all the financial people in the different departments, really worked together as a team and really did something that is pretty impossible. If you know ERP projects, and I know, you know, Dan, for sure you have a lot of software background, they're the most complex and difficult ones to implement and for them to do it in 14 months and be successful and for us to be able to do payroll out of this new system is really amazing. So, I just wanted to say that. So, after we went live, 2024 of April, we started the budget development planning, the planning software implementation. So, that was started in July of this year, so basically a few months ago. We were going through the same methodology, so a really fast implementation with a lot of work done by the county staff. And we went through the blueprint process with Workday and we realized after a few weeks that what we were going to get as an end product wouldn't be sufficient for what we needed to deliver on December 1st for our state controller schedules and it wouldn't be ready in time for us to develop the budget for fiscal year 25-26. So, we immediately stopped and we escalated the issue with Workday and we're looking for solutions for how they could get us from, you know, nothing to operating within a few months. And so, we did that. At the same time, the, the budget team, we all looked at different solutions. We looked at roughly eight different solutions and then we also looked at another solution about trying to see if we could work backwards and work between two systems. So, work in Workday and then also use our old system to try to figure out how we could do this the best way possible in the limited time we had. And we, we realized that trying to do it with two systems, using our old system and our new system, wasn't really feasible. It's a very manual and error prone. We had our two best really financial kind of accounting gurus, the two best minds we have, work and try to do that and, you know, it just wasn't recommended. So, after interviewing all the different vendors and looking at different solutions and ways that we can make things work, the county or our team landed on Sherpa and Sherpa was a unanimous choice because, one, they were going to have our schedules ready by December 1st and, two, they were going to have the budget system ready for mid-year projections and budget development in January. Also, they had a proven track record. They have, they do budget for Alameda County, Humboldt, Kern, San Joaquin, San Luis, San Mateo, Santa Barbara, Ventura, Yellow, Sacramento, I believe, and even Contra Costa. And they also integrate with Workday. So, it's what we needed within that short, you know, span of time between now and December was really a proven solution that was ready to go out of the box and would rely on, a lot on the vendor to help us get there. So, the vendor also stated they never missed a deadline. We'll see about that. You know, I have full faith in them and I'm relying a lot on our team and their opinions and the Auditor Controller, who was also involved in this process, their expertise to say, yeah, this is going to be the best way forward. So, we landed on Sherpa due to the urgency because we only have a few, really, it's only a few weeks to get all of this done. You know, the CAO helped us and approved the agreement. I signed off on the agreement and that's why I'm coming here to ask for the ratification and the approval of the budget amendment. As I said, the alternatives, we looked at so many, none of the other ones were really recommended, although we did do a lot of research and we did actually try to do some of the other things in the meantime as far as moving between two systems. Fiscal impact for the, the year one, the cost of the subscription is $109,803. The services to implement are $237,415. So, that total, you know, if I round up, $347,218 for the current fiscal year. It's not cheap, I definitely know that, but it is our best path forward and is going to get us to where we need in the next few months here. We also negotiated pricing below government contract pricing levels, roughly, I would, I want to say about 18% lower. So, it, it's not cheap, but it's, it's a good deal for us. And with that, you know, I'd be happy to answer any questions, talk about Workday, the project itself, the budgeting system, anything that I could help answer.
Any speaker cards?
Okay.
Through the chair. Make a motion to approve.
Second motion.
Just, just one quick question. So, were you able to, maybe you mentioned this, but were you able to work out any credits with adaptive?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Thank you for that reminder. Yes, so that was one of our first asks as part of this process to get, first of all, adaptive planning, which is the Workday version of budget planning software, removed from our contract and then also get it refunded and get the services refunded. You know, I spoke to them as late as last week and they said they're working on it with their contracts team, so we are actively pursuing that and we won't let go of that until something, you know, occurs and they get, you know, this thing fixed for us.
Okay, great. What would be a ballpark offset on that?
So, I, you know, early on in the project, when we were, before we even came to, so 2021, we looked at some itemized costs and I believe the cost that I saw was $40,000 a year for that subscription. So, it does offset it a bit, but I'll really, you know, I can't guarantee that number. So, I'll let you know as soon as we get some hard numbers.
Okay, great. I'm glad you did that.
Thank you, Ken. Great job. We have a motion and a second. And no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Most passed unanimously. Okay. Steve, follow up.
Adoption of the fiscal year 2024-25 budget resolution and associated adjustments to the recommended budget.
Thank you. Deputy CAO Laura Granados will be giving this presentation.
Good evening, Chair Conan and members of the board. Laura Granados, Deputy County Administrator. Thank you, Steve. On June 25th, subsequent to budget hearings on June 18th, your board tentatively approved the CAO's recommended budget for Sutter County. This provided the authority for county departments to continue operations from July 1st until today, where the, we're asking for the fiscal year 24-25 budget to be formally adopted. We recommend the adoption of the tentative budget with changes as described in Attachment 1 to the budget resolution. Total revenues and appropriations are $481,661,658, which includes the tentatively approved budget of $477,450,253 plus $4,211,405 in budget adjustments that were determined to be necessary after the tentative budget was approved. The budget adjustments include $866,284 for items that are new developments since the budget was submitted, with the remaining $3.3 million being rebudgeted from fiscal year 23-24 for projects or services that were unable to be completed by June 30th and these items need to be carried over for completion in fiscal year 24-25. The budget resolution, which the board must pass to adopt the budget, includes the fund balance for general reserves to remain at $3.9 million and an appropriation for contingency in the general fund at $1,268,903. The resolution also includes instructions for the Auditor Controller's Office upon the close of the fiscal year on how to handle a change in fund balance that may affect the spending plan. And once the budget is finalized, the Auditor Controller will submit the adopted budget to the State Controller's Office by December 1st, 2024, as prescribed by law. And with that, the CAO's office recommends the adoption of fiscal year 24-25 budget. And I'm available and the team is here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Laura. Any speaker cards? No. No. Question from the board?
Through the chair.
Yes.
Move approval.
Second. Motion of the second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion passed unanimously. Okay, Steve, sorry about that. You're on deck.
Great, thank you. Just a couple announcements. One, and we just had the presentation on the museum, but the museum will be closed from October 9 through the 29th due to low staffing. We are sorry about the inconvenience to the public. The closure will allow our very limited staff to concentrate on the exhibit that you saw tonight, the flood exhibit, and to make sure that that grant funding is not in jeopardy. You can visit the website at suttercountymuseum.org and sign up for the monthly e-newsletters. And we also hope that you'll come back promptly after the 29th and also look at attending the Trees and Traditions, the annual gathering and party, and that's on December 6. Then I also wanted to introduce Jake Goodrick from the SACB. He's a reporter new to our area, covering, and I got to speak with him earlier today, and just wanted so people are aware and can approach, and happy to introduce you to any county staff, so. And then one thing, one of the speakers earlier mentioned something about Costco and the county and city not really being able to agree on something, and I know rumors get started, so this isn't about the person mentioning that or anything, but my recollection of that is that Supervisors Baines and Flores had gotten word somehow about Costco going into Yuba County, and that it was probably a 95% done deal, but there was always this very small chance, and we scrambled immediately. I think we had a 7:00 AM meeting the next day with Yuba City and had good cooperation from Yuba City. There was no discussion about, well, what, how would we share it or any of this? We were just trying to get something good for the community. We talked to the, we looked at the Kmart site and called two of the surrounding business owners to see if they would be on board and willing to sell if we could get Costco to come. Ultimately, that didn't work out, but we worked incredibly collaboratively and quickly, and I just wanted to point that out, because I know that rumor is out there sometime. And then there was another location, I think, in the south part of Yuba City that Costco was looking at, but the government doesn't own that land. We can't make them sell it at the price that Costco liked, nor is the infrastructure all in there yet. And additionally, Costco, according to Yuba County officials, they had been planning on building where they're at now in 2007 when the recession hit. So they already had everything laid out to go in there. So anyways, I just wanted to provide some clarity on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. If there's nothing else, I guess we'll move on to district reports and supervisors, and also board consideration of sympathy. Do you want to fire off?
Sure. First of all, I want to thank CAO Smith for clarifying the Costco rumor, because once that gets out there, you know, it just takes off like fire, and it is true that at that time, we all scrambled to make sure, including working with the city of Yuba City very closely, to try to attract Costco here to the look. But we're not giving up. We have other opportunities coming, so we'll stay, we'll stay positive. With that, I do want to close in memory of two people, and Supervisor Zigamire would also like to add his name to the letters. Ray McReynolds, he was a former Sutter County firefighter, if we can close in his memory, and ET Toshay from ETRV, who also passed away.
Carm?
Did you have to type those letters as well?
Okay.
And then also I'd like to have letters of sympathy and condolences sent out to the families of George Pappas and Gerdave K. Chima.
Okay. Anything else you want to bring up? Nothing? Did you have any district reports?
No.
Okay, and Carm? No? Okay. I just have two things. First of all, I'd like to close in memory of Mike Arnold, a former behavioral health board member, passed away. He served on the Behavioral Health Board from 2013 to 15. I'd like to send a letter sent to his family. And on the Costco thing, I couldn't agree more with both of my colleagues that spoke about it. Also, remember that the individual who owned the property where the Costco was built had that millstone around his neck for 20 years. He was probably happy to get rid of it. Anyway, and then I just returned from the RCRC Conference, and very interesting conference, a lot about energy and biomass and alternate energy sources. Pioneer was speaking there as well, and Forest Management. They had a basket auction, as they do every year, and generated for the chairman's charities over $110,000. So you should run for chairman of the RCRC board. Anyway, that concludes my reports.
Can we add one more item? Supervisor Baines and I would like to request putting together a recognition for Robert Suma, who's the former editor, or who's the editor, current editor of the appeal, and who's moving on to a different position, and we'd like to give him recognition from the county.
Sure. So next board meeting is what you're proposing?
Next board meeting, if he's available, we'd like to give him that recognition.
If not, whenever it's suitable for them.
Yes.
Okay.
I move to approve all requests.
Second the motion.
Okay. We have a motion of the second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? Motion passed unanimously? Meeting adjourned. It wasn't going to be.